Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cam, do we have sunshine announcement?
Yes. Good evening Acting Chair. Today is Tuesday, August 26th in the year 2025. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start time. And in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, notice of this meeting was given to the editor of the Bergen Record, El Espolito, and posted with the city clerk on August 22nd of this year. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and made available to the public.
Thank you. Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Acting Vice Chair Commissioner Torres.
Yeah.
Commissioner Stomato.
Here.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Here.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Here.
And Acting Chair Gangadin.
Here.
All right, we have five commissioners present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we swear in the staff, please?
I see Matt, Joe, Matt, Ben, Eric, and Cam. You guys want to speak? The whole truth or nothing?
Yes.
Thank you. Cam, any correspondence?
Yes, Chair. We have, under new business, item 14, case P 2024-0219. Address is 115 Giles Avenue for preliminary and final major site plan requesting to carry with preservation of notice to October 28th. And it was, it's Giles, actually. So that is carried with preservation of notice to October 28th. Next, it is item 18 on the agenda. It is case P 2025-0108, a site plan amendment. Address is 612 Pavonia Avenue, and they've requested to carry with preservation of notice to September 23rd of this year. And then the very last item on the agenda, that is item 19, case P 2025-0027. It is review and discussion of amendments to the Bay Street redevelopment plan. They have requested to carry with preservation of notice to September 9th.
September 9th?
Yes, and that is the next regularly scheduled meeting.
The second one is 18.
18?
Yes. Carried to September 23rd.
And for the record, we've marked into evidence the sunshine announcement as B1.
Thank you.
And that concludes correspondence.
Thank you, Cam. Anyone from the public that is here for case 14, which is P 2024-0219, 115 Giles Avenue, is carried to October 28th? If there is anyone from the public here for 18, which is case P 2025-018, that is carried to September 23rd, 612 Pavonia Avenue? 19, which is case P 2025-0027, is carried to September 9th? If there is anyone from the public here for those cases?
Yes.
I think it's worth saying that no further notice will be given.
Yeah, there'll be no further notice. Sir, you're here for one of those cases? Okay. Which case are you here for, sir? All right, so you gotta come back on all three dates.
It's been carried to the dates that you just heard.
Did you write those down, sir? Okay.
Thank you.
Number 14, October 28th.
At this time, we'll go on to new business. Number eight, case B 2025-001, which is a Section 31 and minor subdivision with variances. Address is 595 Newark Avenue, Jersey City.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. My name is Brittany Murray, Acting Corporation Counsel for the City of Jersey City, representing the city as applicant in this matter. It was a matter that required notice. I do have the notice packet. Do you like me to bring it up?
Please, counsel. Thank you. So Madam Chair, this is the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application being brought forth by the city. It appears to be in order. We're gonna mark it as A1 for purpose of the record.
Thank you. Great. So this is an application. We're dealing with Block 8002, Lot 1, 585 to 595 Newark Avenue. This is a subdivision application. Two things to note in the beginning. This property is currently owned by the county. We do have an affidavit of ownership allowing the city to proceed with this application for subdivision. There, I have with me Director Barca Patel from the city. She'll be speaking and testifying here. There were authorizing ordinances and resolutions passed by both the county governing body and the Jersey City Municipal Council. So she will speak about those when she's giving her testimony. The entire purpose of the subdivision is that we want to subdivide the area to include a vision for a park on one part of the parcel. So this property is located in the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan. It's split between Zone 9 Parks and Zone 6 Preservation, and it spans approximately 5.45 acres. We do need a variance because the Zone 6 Preservation does prohibit subdivision. And the other thing to note is that we did get a memo from the tax assessor that was included in what was uploaded that we need to change the designation of the lots before we sign everything, the new designations. 1.01 is going to be the area that would be designated for the new future public park, and then 1.02 will continue to house the Brennan Courthouse and continue in the preservation zone. So we do need to note that. We did get that based on how the tax assessor reassesses and puts the new lot numbers. So at this point, if I could offer Director Patel to give testimony?
Absolutely. And just for everybody in the public, as well as the board, the Brennan Courthouse and the administrative building at 595 is on one parcel. So the request by the city and the county is to create two parcels for the eventual construction of the park where the current 595 building is. So in case anybody's wondering which piece it is, that's what we're talking about. It is one piece now, and essentially they'd like to divide it, but I'm sure the director will go through.
And 595 is currently occupied, the administration building, but it is, there was the building of a new courthouse right across the street, so the idea is to shift everybody over, and then the administration building would become empty and no longer needed, and then we would continue with the redevelopment there and into a park. Hello. It's been a while. I do. Hello, commissioners.
Hello.
So the corp council covered a lot of the major elements.
You do have to state your name directly.
Oh, I'm sorry. Barca Patel, Director of Infrastructure for Jersey City. The proposed subdivision map is on the screen and has been provided in the packet for everyone. You can see that the long rectangular building that's on the left side of the screen, it is the Hudson County Administration Building. Behind that building is the associated surface parking lot and underground parking garage. So that's the area that we would seek to convert into a public park. It would be an approximately 3.2 acre park. We have done a number of community meetings and outreach and hired consultants to develop concept designs for the park, and this would be the next step in advancing both the transfer of the ownership so that the city could meet its obligations of demolishing the building, abating any environmental issues, and then constructing the park itself. And then the agreements between the city and the county are that while the park would remain under city ownership, maintenance would be handled by the county. The first ordinance that was passed by the City of Jersey City was in April 2022, and that was designating capital funding for the design, construction, and construction management for the park. Later in February of 2023, the city passed an ordinance for the actual acquisition of the property from the county over to the city. And then the Hudson County Commissioners passed a resolution in December of 2023, similarly to convey the property over to Jersey City. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, I suspect that we don't have any further testimony. We can open it to public at this point?
No, we do not.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open for public comments.
Yeah, Councilman Bojiano, this issue's been going on for the last three years. We'd like to get it over with. We understand there's some problems with the, they built the new building too small, so there may be some issues moving the people out. But let's get it started and get it over with. The people in the community, the people in the whole Journal Square area want the park, so I hope you pass it. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public?
Yes.
Good afternoon. I do. Mike Kulowski, K-U-L-O-W-S-K-I, 225 Liberty Avenue.
Mr. Kulowski, you have three minutes.
Yes, I would like to say I'm not opposing a park. I think it's a very good idea, except I have a problem ongoing for years. City has a policy of not placing public notices about this hearing at the place. I'm there every other day at this corner of Central and Newark Avenue, and at any given time, there is no public notice of any new construction, of any hearing, nothing. Why is this murky business allowed to proceed in this city? It's violation of 14th Amendment. You have notices through Bergen Record. Nobody reads it. On the internet, nobody reads it, but you can place on the corner there, right? What's the problem? To place any advertisement of any hearing at the place where, which is involved in the hearing. So I request that you approve this, but from now on, you proceed only after public notice is placed at the construction site where the proposed change will take place. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public?
Seeing no one else from the public wishing to speak, I move to close.
Thank you. Matt, if you want to comment?
Thank you, Acting Chair. So staff prepared a memo dated August 15th, 2025. We also received correspondence from the tax assessor on this subdivision. They asked that the plat be updated to just switch the two future lot designations. So what you see on the screen here, the left page left should be Lot 1.01, and on the right-hand side, Lot 1.1, I'm sorry, Lot 1.02. So the plat before signing should be updated with that change. And looking at this application, and expanding on the summary and testimony given by Director Patel, this application requires a variance. Staff believes that they meet the justifications for the C2 variance. As given in the intro summary, this is a site in two districts of the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan, in the Parks District and the Preservation District. The Brennan Courthouse is going to be preserved by this. It's gonna stay as is, and the park that's envisioned on the west half of this property is going to be furthered by the granting of this subdivision. The application furthers the objectives of the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan. It integrates open space in the area by incorporating a system of parks, plazas, and natural amenities. It provides for urban amenities such as open space and entertainment that will attract new employers and arrange of new residents to the area while sustaining existing neighborhoods. And we heard that it will, the people in the administration building are gonna be moving to the new facility, and that building will be left obsolete. Excuse me. Should be up now again, huh? So that is another goal or objective of the redevelopment plan. With regards to justification for the C2 variance relief, justification to so divide this property is reasonable, given that one of the zones is a park, and the other one is preservation. Those are two, they're both being furthered. The preservation zone as written doesn't allow for subdivision, so on its face, that's where the variance lies. The variance, however, can be granted without substantial detriment, and the variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan. Again, the Brennan Courthouse is being preserved and not altered by this subdivision, and the community benefit of the deviation substantially outweighs any detriment. The subdivision makes way for this public park. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 2025-0001, as it was presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Second.
Acting Vice Chair Torres.
Vice Chair.
I think this is really great for that part of Journal Square, coming up Newark Avenue now, with all the new buildings, and we get on top of the hill, and now we're gonna see a park. And I remember when they built that building, you know, as a, going there as a kid, to the courthouse when it was first opening up. But it's gonna be great to see a park there now, with all the new construction that's going on in the area, and I think it's great for the redevelopment plans, so I vote aye.
Commissioner Stomato.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Yeah, just to echo Councilman Bojiano's words, this has been an ongoing process with the courthouse consortium. Laura Moss was at the council meeting last Wednesday to speak on it, and Director Patel, she has done a yoke person's job in engaging the community, not only with anecdotes, but having professionals come to the St. Joseph's Hall where, or at the Brennan Courthouse, or at the, anywhere in Journal Square, there's been a very strong community engagement. This is a park that will land in the center of Journal Square, which is most needed, and it'll be a very welcomed addition. So I vote aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Yeah, there are so many high-rise buildings, and all the kids and everybody need a park there, so I vote aye.
Acting Chair Gangadin.
Yeah, so I think the variance requested here is very minimal, and it's not a detriment. It's a plus to the community. Having a park is something that adds a lot of value to the community, so my vote is aye.
Motion carries all in favor. Not a motion to approve.
Thank you. We're going to all business. I'd like to call in case P 2025-0135. Address is 173 Academy Street.
Good evening, members of the board. Veronica Schmell from the law firm Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant for P 2025-0135. We have a one-year extension request for you this evening, which I did notice for, and I have the original, if I may approach.
Madam Chair, we receive the affidavit publication proof of mailing with respect to the request for the extension at 165-169 and 173 Academy Street here in the city. It does appear to be in order. Mark it as A1 for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. So again, we are here for a one-year extension request. The applicant for this property obtained preliminary and final approval with deviations under case number P 21-026. Resolution was dated August 10th, 2021. We then obtained a two-year extension under P 2024-0105, by resolution dated August 20th, 2024. That extended our protections to August 10th, 2025 this year. So our final extension request tonight, if approved, would take us to August 10th, 2026. The reason being is that this client is involved with the requests for the amendments to the Journal Square redevelopment plan, which would pretty significantly alter their project if those do go through, so they're asking for an additional year to see how that all shakes out.
Okay, thank you. That's all you have for us?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I would like to ask the board if there is any questions? I'd like to open for the public. Is there anyone from the public?
Mike Kulowski, K-U-L-O-W-S-K-I, 225 Liberty.
Mr. Kulowski, you have three minutes.
Yes, under the Fifth and 14th Amendment, there should be a public notice placed at the site at 173 Academy. Never was, and it's a policy of the city to allow developers not to place public notices. New Jersey statutes annotated does not, do not replace public notices under Fifth Amendment, due process of law. I have a right, and everybody else in the city, to know when developer applies for a variance here or any changes. Therefore, I request that this will be tabled, and proper notice, public notice be placed at this site, so people have a right to know at this place in the vicinity of 173 Academy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing nobody else from public, I move to close the public portion part of the meeting.
Thank you. Public is closed. Mr. Lempe, is there any way you can comment on that public notice issue here? Because it seems like every case that I call, it will be the same issue.
The gentleman is free to feel the way he wants. The notice is provided in accordance with the law. There is nothing that requires the notice to be placed at the property, and with respect to the Fifth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, I don't know what the reference is.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion. I'm sorry, Matt.
Staff just asks that all conditions from previous resolutions continue to apply.
Yes, the client would agree to that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 2025-0135, as it was presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Acting Vice Chair Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
And Acting Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here for the next one, too, though.
You are. I'd like to call in case P 2025-0153. Address is 306 Newark Avenue. It's a extension, site plan extension.
Thank you. Again, good evening, members of the board. Veronica Schmell from the law firm Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant for 306 to 310 Newark Avenue. We are here again for a one-year extension under P 2025-0153. We similarly provided notice for this application, if I may approach.
Madam Chairman, we receive the affidavit and notice proof of publication with respect to the application at 306 to 310 Newark Avenue here in the city. It does appear to be in order. We're gonna mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. So again, we are here for a one-year extension. The applicant here obtained preliminary and final approval with variances under P 20-116, approved by resolution dated July 20th, 2021. We thereafter got a two-year extension under P 23-102, resolution dated August 8th, 2023. That extended our statutory protections to July 20th, 2025 this year. If approved, this extension would then take us to July 20th, 2026. The reason being in this one, our applicants experienced some delays in getting their demo permits with the review through Historic, which I'm now helping them work through, so they are asking for an additional year to be able to finalize that process.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? I'd like to open for the public. Is there anyone from the public?
Mike Kulowski, K-U-L-O-W-S-K-I.
Mr. Kulowski, you have three minutes.
Fifth Amendment, due process of law. We have the right to know what is going on in our city. There's a plentiful case law about placing public notices at the construction sites. It costs almost nothing developer to do so, and absolutely nothing for the city to require developer to do so. So what's the point? Well, the point is to hide from the public what is going on in the city and allow people to challenge it. So I'm requesting that this will be denied for the sole reason that there was no public notice placed at this specific site. And by the way, I'm suing the city over the very thing, not placing notices at construction sites about the proposed changes. So what's the point? Can somebody explain, what's the reason this developer never placed a public notice at a construction site?
Because the law does not require that, sir.
It does.
It, okay, sir.
Supremacy clause of the Constitution. New Jersey statutes do not supersede the Constitution. End of the story.
That's definitely not the end of the story. Google it. That's how you do legal research? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from public?
Seeing no one else from the public wishing to speak, I move to close.
Thank you. Ben?
Staff recommends that all conditions of approval remain in full force and effect, and staff recommends approval of this motion.
Client would agree to the prior conditions of approval.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 2025-0153, as it was presented to the board tonight.
Acting Vice Chair Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Acting Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
At this time, I would like to call in case P 2025-0071. Address is 829 Bergen Avenue, Jersey City.
Thank you. For the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant, this matter was before the board, or started before the board on July 15th, wherein we presented testimony with regard to the civil engineering and architectural. Tonight, notices were obviously preserved because it's carried, but tonight we have our traffic engineer and our professional planner to testify. But I would note, before we begin, I think, I believe all the commissioners were present except for Commissioner Torres at the July 15th hearing. So counsel, if he could... I believe that is correct.
And I did read the transcript and watched the video of the pre-dub meeting prior to the last August 12th meeting, so I am...
You were ready on August 12th?
I was ready on August 12th, yeah.
Thank you. So just maybe as a reminder of the project before you, before I jump in, it is a proposed 11-story building with 77 residential units, of which 10% will be affordable. So 7.7 rounds up to eight affordable units. It is similar in size and scale as to the project that was approved by this board in 2024. There is a new owner of the of the property. Also, the zoning changed since the last proposal where parking is no longer required. So that is really the crux of the project before you tonight. The changes are that you now have no parking within the project, same number of units, same bulk, although now the affordable units, it's no longer 5%, it's 10%. And you're going to have retail on the ground floor instead of a parking ramp that cuts across the sidewalk. We are requesting the variances with regard to the minimum lot, lot area and lot width. Those are hardship variances in that those are the existing conditions. Those were approved as part of the last approval. We are also requesting a rear yard setback now as a result of the zoning because it changed, same, same building, but now we would require a rear yard setback under the new zoning and for relief on the permitted rooftop coverage. So with that kind of recount of the project, I'll move right in unless the board has any questions with our traffic engineer just to address, you know, any, you know, concerns, even though there's no parking.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I do. Sure, it's Nicholas Kennedy, K-E-N-N-E-D-Y.
Mr. Kennedy, have you testified in front of this board before?
Not in front of this board, many others in New Jersey, but I haven't had the pleasure of being in front of Jersey City yet.
Okay, you want to give us a brief history of your background?
Sure. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is current and in good standing. I hold a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from the University of Hartford. I've prepared over 300 traffic studies throughout the state and have qualified as an expert in the field of traffic and transportation engineering in front of over 200 boards throughout the state.
Thank you. You're qualified.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy, just to begin, you did prepare a report in connection with this project. Is that correct?
We did.
Okay. Can you, you know, give the board the benefit of your expert testimony with regard to the traffic conditions at the property and any reference to your report?
Sure. So again, our office prepared a traffic impact letter report that was dated April 7th, 2025. And just for kind of a brief background on the site itself, again, the site's located along Bergen Avenue. Bergen Ave provides one lane to travel in each direction, has about a 12-foot striped median in front of the site, and then a two-way bike lane on the opposite side of the, on the opposite side of the property. So essentially, you have a southbound travel lane, a 12-foot striped median, a northbound travel lane, and then a two-way bike lane going from our property across the street. For a little context on the area itself, the site's located about a five to 10-minute walk from Journal Square and the Journal Square path station. It's located about five to 10-minute walk from nine different NJ Transit bus routes, generally taking you throughout different parts of Essex and Hudson County. Again, this is a very, a very walkable area. There's multiple retail, restaurant, there's a pharmacy nearby, some local grocery markets, multiple churches. So, you know, other than the different transportation routes, buses, the path, it's also a very walkable area. We are providing bike parking on the site, both indoor and outdoor, and I think that bodes well with the two-way bike lane that's provided along Bergen Avenue. So again, this, all, taking all of this into account, really plays into that this is a site that a resident might not necessarily need a car. Again, the changes from the previous site planner that we removed the access, we removed some of the, or the parking that we were providing on the site. But when you look at this area, it's one that an overwhelming majority don't use a single, single occupancy vehicle to travel to work. Over 80% of people don't use a car to get to work, and over 50% of people in this census tract in this area don't own a car in general. So that's really just to give a sort of a background on the area itself that's directly surrounding this property. Again, not to get too into it on some of the changes, but we're providing 77 units. That's consistent with the, the prior approval for the site. And then the big change is that we're removing the access and parking. Also, the building is slightly set back from the property line. I think this is a benefit. It provides, you know, kind of a wider pedestrian area. It's about 20 feet from curb to the front of the building. So at least with the short frontage we have, you do have a wide area for pedestrians to maneuver along our site frontage. Moving on to what actually changed about the project, again, it's really, it comes down to the access and the parking. Starting with the access, again, we fully removed it, so there will be no cars going into or out of the site, directly into our property. And I think when you look at this, you're, you're looking at a safer condition along Bergen Avenue. Obviously, you don't have vehicles interfering with other vehicles, trying to get into and out of the site. You're also, you also have vehicles not interfering with pedestrians walking along Bergen Avenue. As the site was designed before, you had to come up the ramp from the garage, see a pedestrian, see a car, and then turn out of the site. Really the same thing coming in. What we're doing by removing the access is removing any conflict points with not only vehicles, but also the pedestrians walking along that site frontage. Moving on to the parking, again, I think I kind of explained this, but we're located within five to 10 minute, 10-minute walks of both the path and multiple NJ Transit bus routes. This is an area that, again, has an overwhelming majority of people who use public transportation, whether that's a bus, whether that's the path. Over 50% of people don't own a car based on the latest census data. So I think you're looking at an area where residents don't necessarily need a car, and residents might seek out a place where they don't have to have a vehicle. Obviously, there's other opportunities within the city where you might be able to park your car if you do feel like you need one. But this is an area that's very well equipped for people who commute to work via other modes other than a single occupancy vehicle. Just kind of as a conclusion, the project from a traffic and transportation perspective, in my professional opinion, is safer. We removed a driveway on Bergen Avenue and removed any conflicts with residents or other vehicles. And again, just to get back to the parking, this is a site that does not require parking. That was changed when the ordinance changed and likely contemplated because of all the different options for public transportation because of the walkability of the surrounding area. And again, just to, to really understand, this is an area that somebody who is living in this building would not necessarily need a car to do their, you know, daily commute to work or daily activities.
Any questions from the board?
No.
Okay, then I'll move along with Ms. Worstel.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I do. It's Carolyn Worstel, W-O-R-S-T-E-L-L.
Ms. Worstel, is your license still current?
It is.
In good standing?
It is current and in good standing this evening.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Thank you. So I'm here again to sort of close out the direct testimony on this application. As Chuck mentioned, you know, this is, this is a project that was previously approved. A very similar project was approved on this site back in May of 21st of 2024. That application was very similar. 11 stories, 77 dwelling units. It had 5% affordable or four units with 20 parking spaces. And it was approved under the CBD district. That district has since been discontinued. It doesn't exist anymore. And under that CBD district, that project was required and was granted variances for minimum lot area, minimum lot width, and minimum front yard setback. Fast forward to today into the current, the current application, this is a new application because we removed that parking. But other than that, the, the bulk of the building, the, the number of units, those are all basically the same as what was previously approved and granted. We're still 11 stories, still 77 dwelling units, but we now have increased the number of affordable units from 5% to 10%. So that's now eight affordable units. And when we removed those parking spaces, there were those changes to the cellar. You know, we were allowed, able to add more residential storage. And when we removed the, the need for that ground floor space for the drive access, we were able to add over 1,000 square feet of commercial space. So we think that that really, you know, it creates a, a better facade and a better pedestrian experience for this particular building, this particular site on, on Bergen Avenue. On the upper floors, there were just very minor changes to the facade. We did actually increase that front yard setback. We had some very minor changes to residential layouts to address affordable housing requirements. We removed some rear yard balconies and some changes to the roof deck layouts. And then we were also able to now add a street tree because we removed that driveway. So all in all, it was very, some very minor changes to this application that resulted from, from the removal of that parking. Today, this property is now zoned in the neighborhood commercial district three, NC three. It has, with that change, we, we still need that lot area and lot width variances. But now, instead of a front yard setback, we need a rear yard setback. So we now, with the project as approved, it is conforming front yard with a minimum of 15 feet measured from curb to the building line. So we are conforming with that. But now we need a rear yard setback. Under the CBD district, there was no requirement for rear yard setback. Now there is. So that's why we, we need that variance. Getting into those, the positive criteria, looking at the minimum lot size and lot width, we look at this as a C1, a hardship, classic hardship. The subject property has a lot size of 6,841 square feet, where a minimum of 10,000 square feet is required for all uses. This lot property, this property has 40 feet of width, where a minimum lot width of 100 feet is required in the CBD, or in this, in the new NC three district, again, for all uses. We, we can't be compliant. We have buildings on either side of us. So there really is no opportunity for additional land to be acquired in order to become compliant. And there really is no other, you know, there are no other uses. This is the minimum requirement for any use in this district. So really, without the variances being granted, there is no use that is allowed at this, this property. And again, this is, this is exactly the same situation we were in under the previous application. And again, those variances were granted. And so we hope that you feel the same, that, that this is a hardship and can be granted again. Moving on to that minimum rear yard setback, so the, the new NC three district requires a minimum rear yard setback of 15%. We are proposing a zero foot rear yard setback along approximately half of the rear wall. And then we are sort of setting in and providing a five-foot setback along the remainder. So we, we are sort of setting back a portion. This rear yard setback at zero feet is consistent with the previously approved structure, which was at zero foot, because at that time, the CBD district, there was no rear yards requirement, and, and so we were conforming. The, there's an existing structure on this property that does have a zero foot rear yard setback, except for a one-story garage. So the lot currently has, you know, there's no increase in impervious coverage as a result of this variance being granted. And, but we are going to be providing a little over, over 2,000 square feet of green roof, which will help, again, to mitigate coverage. The setback is consistent with building depths on some of the adjacent residential structures, including the Madrid, which is to the south of us. And in terms of light and air impacts, directly to the rear of us is a cemetery. We will have some shadow impacts to that cemetery in the morning hours. But again, these are consistent with the setback, the, the shadow impacts that were under that previously approved project. I don't see there's really any substantial detriment, you know, that's very similar to the, the impacts previously approved. We are with this triggering the IZO, and that's how we get to that 10%. And that was additional affordable housing, or the additional four units of housing. And so I think that here we are, there's not really a substantial detriment, and we are providing the benefits of, again, that additional affordable housing and the green roof. And then finally, we are, this is sort of a new one, is a request for rooftop coverage. So the, the LDO permits 20% of rooftop coverage. We are proposing about 44%. And that has to do with how we're providing the mechanical equipment on this pro, proper, project. The facade in the building is designed so not to have any PTAC units. So we do need additional mechanical equipment on the roof. And so we need that additional coverage in order to be able to put the mechanicals necessary for all of the units to be on the roof. They won't be visible from the street. They are setback in compliance with the rooftop appurtenance setback requirements in the LDO. So I think there the, the benefit, which is the visual of no PTAC outweighs the need for that additional coverage. I think this project is advancing the purposes that municipal land use law. It's an appropriate use. It's, you know, a new, now it's a mixed-use building. It's got ground floor, commercial, and residential above on Bergen Avenue, which is very much in proximity to the Journal Square area. And so this is really a, a use and development style that's consistent with the character of Bergen Avenue. We are going to be providing the, with those eight, eight affordable units. You know, we are continuing to provide an adequate light air and open space with the, by maintaining the setbacks that are consistent with the surrounding area and consistent with the previously approved project. We are creating appropriate space for residential and commercial uses, consistent with purpose G, and promoting that desirable visual environment, consistent with purpose I. You know, this is taking what is, you know, one-story commercial garage with a, with a sort of a driveway, and we're going to be turning this into a new multi, mixed-use, multifamily building that's really consistent with the development that's happening here in this neighborhood and in Journal Square in, in general. I don't see this resulting in substantial detriment to the public good or general welfare. Again, we're, we're sort of replacing, you know, that, that sort of existing commercial building with a new attractive mixed-use, multifamily building. We are going to be providing new curbs, new sidewalks, a new street tree, and removal of an existing curb cut. So overall, this, I think, improves that pedestrian safety along this busy corridor. It's going to meet current building code standards and provide, you know, improvements in stormwater with, you know, that additional 2,000 square feet of green roof. I don't see this being a substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone planner zoning ordinance. It's consistent with the purpose of the NC three district, which is to foster the development of a vibrant and accessible citywide activity district that is a center of commerce and civic activity, function as a local and regional destination for business, retail, education, government services, entertainment, and transportation. And it contains numerous residential, institutional, government, public uses in a high-intensity urban context. So I do think that this building really is consistent with the intent of that sort of high-intensity urban context. So I think overall, this project can, those variances can be granted in that both the negative and positive criteria have been met. If anyone has any direct questions?
Any questions from the board?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, then that would complete our presentation to the board.
Mr. Harrington, are all your witnesses here this evening in case anybody has questions?
Yes, we do. We have our architect and our We have our architect and our civil engineer.
Okay, appreciate it.
I had a, I did have a question for the architect. Just to be, I want to clarify something that I've called for.
Okay. And just for the record, the architect that testified at the first hearing was Amid Amara. He's not, he's out of the country tonight, so this is his partner. So if he'll get sworn in.
Well, he should be able, he should be able to, or even the staff might be able to answer my questions.
I'm sure, I'm sure he can. Just for the record, I want to have him sworn in and qualify.
Yes, I do. My name is Ephraim Gabriel, E-F-R-A-M. Gabriel is G-H-O-B-S-N-B-Y-R-I-A-L.
Mr. Gabriel, is your license current? Have you testified in front of this board before?
I have, and my current, my license is current.
Standing?
Yes.
Sure.
I just had a, well, I was listening to the video of the previous hearing at the planning board meeting that I was at. The architect mentions something on the building to the left, when you're looking at the property face-on, the property to the left, that there is a one-inch gap in between the property. So when I'm looking at the drawing, I can't tell if that is just a, the drawing, or is there a one-inch gap in between the existing building and the building that you're going to build?
So around the first, I believe it's around the first 50 feet of the property, there's about a one-inch gap, which gets wider towards the end of it, to about maybe six inches. I've been there and I looked at it.
Why would we put a one-inch gap?
No, the one-inch gap is on the neighbor's property, not our property. You're, oh, you mean it's one-inch gap on our property?
You're going to put a building up against another building with a one-inch gap in between them? This is what I understand it.
So part of this is for the...
My question then is, how do you maintain that? How do you prevent water damage from going through there? How do you, how is it sealed at a one-inch gap? And we got to look at this as a 20, 50-year project, you know, something that's, you know, there are another 80 years, not something that's built right now. Right now, there is no water damage, you know? But what happens in the future? And so is there any way of sealing that, where that building meets, that there is not a one-inch gap in between, that's open to any elements? Because it seemed that's what he said.
So to clarify, the gap that I mentioned, it's mostly on the property next door, the Madrid. So, you know, their wall is set a little bit further from their property line. On our building, it's mainly resulted from the SOE that we are anticipating. So just because we're going to have to, you know, drive down some piles, I guess, you know, that's, that's the reason why that gap...
Wind up with a one-inch gap?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I understand that. Okay, so then maybe with staff or with, because the building was built many years ago.
Sure.
Okay, so the owner of that building is not, should take the hardship of sealing that. You know, your building is your building. His building has existed. If there's some type of agreement you could make, I think it would be to his interest to have that sealed, that there's no problems, and I think it's best to your interest. Because like I'm saying, like I'm saying again, 20 years down the line, 40 years down the line, what do we do with that? When something is damaged, there's no repair, there's no fixing.
Sure.
You know? So just something to look at. It caught my attention when I was looking at the transcript, and I was looking at it, it just caught my attention. So maybe we're speaking with the owner of the building and seeing somehow when you seal the building's roof, what you could do to prevent that from being...
I think it's a very valid point, and we can for sure communicate and deal with that.
That's the only question I had.
So we, yeah, we could, as a condition of approval, agree to pursue that with the adjacent property owner. We don't have any right to build on their property, but we could absolutely pursue it. I know my client is in discussions with them already. They have an agreement in place for access during construction if this were to be approved, or ultimately if the prior project was built. So they already have a line of communication open.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, just to counsel Alampi, if, just so for clarity for the public, more so than even on the record, if this proposal goes forward and it's declined, there is a current plan for a similar-type building for that parcel. Is that correct to say?
Yes, so what was previously approved by this board, I believe it was in the spring of 2024, is a valid approval. That approval has not been touched by this application. And despite what a lot of people believe the law provides, you can have more than two, more than three, more than four. There's no limit onto how many valid approvals you can have affecting one piece of property. And then ultimately choose from whatever has been approved, which one you're going to build. So this application does not abandon the prior approval by the applicant.
And yet, if it's approved, it would supersede that one?
If it were to be approved, or if the board were inclined to put forth a resolution, I suspect that it would include a condition that the other approval is deemed abandoned and no longer valid in full force, and that the applicant is asking to go forward with this project. Is that correct, Mr. Harrington?
I agree with counsel. Thanks for the clarity.
At this time, is there any other one to testify?
No, that concludes our presentation.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to open for public comments.
All I got to say is, I can't believe any one of you would believe that a building this size is not going to have any, nobody's going to have a car. Come to my neighborhood where I live and see the disaster every day with all the people in those big buildings in Journal Square, parking on Magnolia Avenue, parking on Chestnut Street, parking on Newark Avenue. That is the biggest BS I've heard in a long time. And the gentleman who got up and spoke, I guess he's not from Jersey City and doesn't know anything about Jersey City. All right, first of all, the city did not do a traffic study there. They did their traffic study. That area is horrible with traffic, especially since they put in the bike lanes, all right? We have a demolition problem there. Because if, are you aware of the church? That church is one of the busiest places in the city of Jersey City, and kids are out there, loads of kids. Nothing has been done to protect the people of the church while they're doing this construction. All right? And all I could say is that this is wrong. There has to be parking. They have to have a park and a garage and the people, because that is absolute BS to say, nobody in that building is going to have a car. And I feel sorry for the church. That church is one of the busiest, nicest churches in Jersey City. And Father David has been a friend for years. And believe me, I wish, I wish you'd take into consideration the church. And they have to have parking, and they have to, there are other regulations that have to go along with what, you know, the traffic study to sit by the city, all right?
Councilman, just one thought.
You know, this 6,800 square feet with 77 apartments, that's such a small space, and they have 11 stories, and that Bergen Avenue is so small, you know? I pass by there every day, and you know, when you pass by, there is one parking here, one parking, and two cars to go. So where are they going to park the cars? Are they going to make sure that none of them have a car?
You can't do that. All right, hold on, hold on, Commissioner, hold on, councilmen. Let's clear the deck. There is no parking requirement with this project. The council passed an ordinance where parking is not required, councilman. I didn't vote for it, okay? I didn't say whether you voted for it or not, but the council passed that, not this board. So this board doesn't have anything to do with parking at the site. They're not asking for a variance for parking. They don't need any based on the ordinance from the council. We don't have any jurisdiction to address parking.
But you know what, to the councilman's point, and what I think he's speaking to, I will never try to put words in your mouth, Councilor Bojiano, is that he just stated that while it was approved by the council, that he voted against it, and his constituents, which I'm one of, he fundamentally has a problem with this because it doesn't have parking. Is that correct, Rich?
Yes.
There's no question that's the councilman's position.
And so, and so, long story short, they're asking for a variance, which we don't have to approve.
But not for parking.
Not for parking.
The variance is not tied to parking, Commissioner, so it's not fair to say anything differently. It's not fair.
But no, it may not be, you know, and life isn't fair. But at the end of the day, if, if that is a concern from the community, it may not be borne out in the way the council approved the plan, but, you know, again, this isn't as-of-right application that we're hearing. It's asking for a variance, so.
Yeah, the original building was supposed to have parking.
Yes.
When they sold the building to this new owner, they changed it. And believe me, that is such a...
I agree with all of that, counselman.
A lie when they say nobody's going to have a car. As I said, come to my neighborhood, it's a disaster, and we're sick and tired of it. We're sick and tired of these buildings being built, and nobody cares about the residents in the area, the one- and two-family homeowners. And it's about time, and the things are going to change, believe me.
Thank you, councilman. Again, we are in public's comment section. Good evening.
I do. Imad Attala, ATT-A-A-L-L-A, 59 Chestnut Street, New Jersey. I'm a deacon of Barbara Croatia for San George Church.
Thank you, you have three minutes?
Yes, for respect for our commissioner. I want to just speak about the parking, not for the church. I'm a community leader of Jersey City. I go visit people to serve, the people around the church. So it's too hard to park in anywhere, anywhere around this area. I want to just treat the resident of Bergen Avenue as you treat manor area, section. Last, last meeting, the word from the lawyer, the word from the engineer, they make project there, same lawyer, same engineer, they do the project here, they say, we're not supposed to do parking because the zoning has changed, but we listen to the resident. Less number of the floor, less apartment, less traffic in manor area than Bergen Avenue. So I'm not speak about parking. Parking is be the city problem. But the planner, he not want to take the parking because he want to give you 10% for for a house. He want to save money because digging and make this parking cost him a lot of money. So only he looking for business, he don't looking for the resident around. So I consider you to both consideration to treat Bergen Avenue resident as manor section, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do. Hi, everyone, thank you for spending the last week...
Pam, you have three minutes?
Oh, I have to...
State your name.
Pam Andes, 191 Van Horn Street. And I have to swear?
No, you're good.
Now I forgot. Okay. Just some notes from the councilman, a lot of his meetings. He has been asking for parking amendment, and he's told by city planning that as licensed planners, they cannot require parking in the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan. So I'm just letting you know, the fight for parking is real, but we're constantly told no. So if there's another way to do that, we would like to do that. Before I started working with Councilman Bojiano, he and a group of residents during pandemic formed this development watchdog group. The goal of the development watchdog group is to examine density, height, parking, sunlight, and any changes that would destroy or complement their neighborhood. Below are some of their, so here are some of their comments. The residents on Bergen Avenue, Highland, DeKalb, and Vroom have been complaining about parking. We get all of those calls. Developers really need to work with the community. The councilman has been requesting that meetings with the community and the developer be mandatory and not a courtesy. For two years, the former developer, or the former owner of this property, met with residents in the community. Council President Joyce Waterman was there. Councilperson Mira Prince-Arey at the time was also there. And for two years, we had all of these meetings. They were not lovely, but at the end of those two years, the developer and the community had an agreement, and that was to put in onsite parking for residents, because everyone is tired of fighting each other over street parking. The councilman also spoke with a traffic engineer who could not be here and is requesting to do a traffic study. That they are requesting that the Jersey City Municipal Code 345-17 requires a traffic impact assessment be done on all major site plans. And they, they see this neighborhood, this is a major site plan. This has been the main concern for all of the residents. Other concerns are height, public aesthetic. If you look along the street, the proposed building does not complement the church. There's also a historic value. The, this location is the site of the former Raymond Glass Company, which is described as the oldest glass company in New Jersey that is still operating. So before demolition occurs, please take photos, video of the existing glass ceiling at 829 Bergen before demolition. There has also been a fire at this site. I'm hoping one of the residents will talk about that, and it affected the church next door. Commissioners have legal counsel. Residents would like a public legal counsel. So the councilman is working with his legal counsel in to make these improvements, including public notice be physically posted on the site. He just submitted that. Note, the councilman also wants, well, not the councilman, but everybody, the development watchdog group thinks you should treat these applications like a murder case. The burden of proof is on the developer. If there is just a thread of doubt on this application, vote no. And ask the developer to work with the community. Thank you so much.
Chair Gangeden, before the next commenter, could I just respond to some, just because Ms. Andes quoted our land development ordinance?
Absolutely.
So 345.17 requires that the developer furnish an assessment of traffic, which the developer did. Their traffic engineer submitted a report that's been available to the public, and their traffic engineer also testified to the contents of that report. The city is not required to perform their own assessment. They just validate the assessments done by the applicant. And also, just as a further reminder, that the municipal land use law creates subjective standards for how to evaluate a variance request, and that has to do with the preponderance of positive and negative criteria. This isn't criminal court. There is no, it's not like reasonable doubt or anything like that. I just wanted to make sure the board... I just wanted to make sure the board has understood the facts on hand and understands the responsibilities.
Thank you. Our next.
Hi. Yes, I swear, I'm Maureen Nally, I swear, I'm 59 years resident here, I'm not leaving. Maureen Nally. M-A-U-R-E-N, last name N is a Nancy, A-L-L-Y. 47 Highland, I really didn't wanna tell everybody, but hey.
All right, you have three minutes.
Sorry, three minutes, quick. I'm, I'm living on 47 Highland, but currently I am displaced due to a massive house fire, so I have experience living in a 16-story building on Jordan Avenue, and let me tell you, traffic study guy, there are all kinds of cars parked there. People that live in the building, they come with their cars. Even 55 Jordan also has parking available, it's too expensive. Because I'm a member of the community, we have community meetings, and one of the major points of topic and complaints are the lack of parking for the residents of the whole area, because 55 Jordan is there parking inside and outside on the regular streets. So that's just sidebar to everything else. As far as that, that, the study that was also done, I've, I've sit here and I wasn't really gonna speak, but I'm a little irked over the fact that the lack of, the driveway that we met a million times or so many times with the past approved, approved application, we met in all kinds of weather, finally came up with an agreement with the past developer, and he finally said, you know what, we're gonna do the parking, 20 spots, whatever, because there's already this, the little driveway going down, right? We also spoke about, how is everyone going to move into this 77-unit building without a place to pull in? That was one of the topics of the conversation that we had, like, oh, great, they'll pull into that area and unload and whatever. Everyone's not gonna move in on the same day. Everyone will order Uber Eats, the whole nine. There's no place to pull over. There's a fire hydrant right outside the front of the building, I know that that can't be moved. But as far as being safety and people walking on Bergen Avenue, just .4 miles to the south is a very, very busy fire, fire station, engine nine, one of the busiest in the, in the city, and it is in and out, in and out, all day long. I can bet my life that there's never been an accident there with a battalion chief's car and a fire truck. So there, this is not a lack, the fact that we are gonna use safety as an excuse to not have parking or, or work with what we said in the beginning when we had the first, we had a million meetings, we have had no meetings for this updated, we don't, because the city changed their, their regulations, I'm all over the place here, but, you know, we, we got together so many times with this Chuck Harrington, and, and he does a great job, he's good, but we finally came to an agreement, and it was to add the 20 parking spots and to have a place where people could move in. And now we're, no meetings, and now there's no parking and no place to move in, and we need to like slow down on, on, on voting for this, or have more community engagement with basically a new application, because it has new, there are changes to it that is a different application to what we went to bed with two years ago as an approved thing. Meanwhile, you know, the building, like this lady said, she's wondering how it's all gonna happen, the building will be shaped like two pieces of pizza coming out of a toaster up top, it's triangular. So that's gonna change, that's something else, I'm not even gonna talk about that.
Your time is up, sorry.
Parking is key, and community engagement is key, and it's only fair.
Thank you. Good evening.
Sure. Yes. Sure, Father David Habib, I serve at 835 Bergen Avenue, St. George. I was resident of Jersey City for 35 years before I moved, but I still serve in Jersey City.
Father Habib, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My, I'm speaking today primarily because of frustration with the process, not the building next door. I think a lot of people speak about the building, but when we came here a year and a half ago, we spoke about three issues: traffic, parking, and how the building fits into the community. And we were told, you can't speak, it's a hardship variance, there's no conversation about it. Yet, we've been here for weeks, week upon week, and every developer says, well, I'm making sure that the building is fitting with the motif, it's the right size, it's the right color, it's the right shape, but this developer, whoever the developer is, oh, this one gets an exception, it's a hardship, we can't discuss the size of the building in a 40-foot wide space. The new variance with the new code, we're going from 40, the, the, the new zoning requires 100, they have 40. So how is that reasonable? But, okay, and then we're saying, no, we can't discuss parking now, the new zoning says so-and-so, but we still want the old zoning limits with regards to setbacks. We, we have to be consistent in some way. If this was, if there was nobody here and someone's presenting an application to build 77 units on a strip of land that's 40 by, does that make, I remember the old, I built a 25 by 100, it was a two, you were allowed a two-story, a two-story house in a 25 by 100, all of Jersey City was built like that in 90s and 2000s. Now 40 by 100 gets you 77 units. Where's the consistency? We came, last time we wanted to speak about traffic, the traffic study said to us, we did a traffic study, they, these are the two days that we gave you, we told them, these are not high-traffic times. You picked, you didn't pick a Sunday when we told you, there's three churches on three corners. We didn't pick a Sunday, we didn't pick a school day. It was, it was silly. This, the traffic person who spoke today didn't talk to us about what days he used for his, he talked about people who owned cars, great, but when did you do the study? How many people, it's, if you drive there, if you live there, it doesn't make sense. Something is not adding up. And no one's questioning anything, sure, sure, sure. We, we have no problem with Jersey City development, we love that Jersey City is becoming a vibrant city, it's always been a vibrant city, lived here, born here, raised here, graduated from here, no problem with Jersey, but there has to be some common sense. And every time we bring up a topic, you say, sorry, we can't discuss this because the new zone doesn't require it, we can't discuss this, so what can we discuss? You're maiming the people and telling us we can't speak because the new, it's not part of variances anymore. This is the problem that I'm having with this process? What can we speak about? We could just come here and say, okay, sure, whatever you want, okay? It doesn't make sense, what we're asking to build on a 40-piece by, okay, don't give the new variances, okay, let's build the old, we will, you wanna follow this, this, we wanna follow the, the new zoning, then don't, then we don't need variances. Follow the news, but you can't have everything, both ways, sideways, it's, it doesn't make sense. So I'm frustrated with the process, not against the builder or the developer, I wish everybody success in everything they do. Something has to make sense, or else your citizens are getting frustrated, your people are getting frustrated, and you reap what you sow. If you ignore your citizens long enough, there's gonna be a problem. Look at San Francisco.
Thank you.
Yes, I do. Magdi Youssef, M-A-G as in George, D as in David, Y as in yellow, Youssef, Y-O-U-S-S-E-F, 3 Batista Court, serve in New Jersey.
Ms. Youssef, you have three minutes.
Okay. I'm a licensed professional engineer, I residence in Jersey City for about 15 years, and I moved to the south recently. I'm a board member of St. George Church. Initially, I'm working with media engineering, I worked with Mr. Tefon, the developer, to design a construction fence and preliminary support of excavation and roof protection for the church. But now he find another engineer because I'm working with the church, which is fine. I would like to, to state one statement about the presentation, it's in fair condition, it's not dedicate all the site condition. And that's why, because I'm gonna explain what's the church building is, so the, the board commissioner here can understand and see it. The church is a four-story building above a full cellar, and it has two means of egress, one means stairs at the front, and one, the second means of egress is the, at the side yard. And this is the plan of the second means of egress. The stairs is located exactly at the property line at the south side of the church, which is
Sir, if you wanna show that, you're gonna have to show it to Mr. Harrington first, and then you're gonna have to tell us what it is, and we'll have to mark it. I mean, I, I see it, I'm not sure, you know, with all due respect to Magdi, it's not signed and sealed, I'm not, I'm not sure where the property lines are, I mean, I, I, it's, I have no idea what it is, Mr. Harrington. But I'm, I'm not sure if this fairly depicts it or not.
Okay. So the, the stairs is located, it's a physical stairs, it's located, the second means of egress is located at the property line. Mr. Gabriel, the architect, walked with me the, the site, and he saw it by his eyes, and he has a picture of the physical stairs. So the testimony about this document, we can put it on aside.
Sir, I might allow you to pass the document around, if you wanna explain what it is. I, yes, he's objecting, that's his job, but
I have my job too.
Okay, so tell me what it is. Don't show it to me, tell me, go back over there, go back over there. I'm, I'm pausing your time. Tell me what it is with words, without showing it. Don't show it, put it down.
That's what I'm explaining.
You gotta just tell me, did you make it?
No, this is the existing plans of the building, how it was built.
Where'd you get it?
I got it from an existing documents stored in the church, and I scanned
These are church's documents.
Yes, and I stored
That show, you gotta let me help you.
Sure.
These are the church's documents that you have access to because you're a licensed engineer, is that fair?
Correct.
And these documents are with respect to the construction of stairs or maintenance of stairs, or stairs that were constructed at the church?
Correct.
And you've reviewed this document?
Correct.
And you've been to the church?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the stairs?
Yes.
And this accurately depicts those stairs that are actually built at the church?
Correct.
Okay, we're gonna mark it as 01, and we're gonna pass it around.
Sure, thank you.
So bring it forward. Counsel, if I could, just for the record, our architect advised that they actually have as part of our plan, a sketch that shows the separation of the church's stairs to our building. So that, that is part of the record, if you want us to bring that up and, and show it now or at a later time. Thank you, Counsel.
Okay, so the stairs is a second means of egress of the church. The church is four-story occupied and, and very busy church with 500, 600 occupancy and parishioner and congregation going up and down. In, in the case of the traffic in the church, we use the stairs. Now, the, the new design and the new Burbeau's design is showing the, when the well of the, the new building is located exactly adjoining to the stairs platform. The edge of the window to the, to the stair platform is 1'6. The center of the, the windows to the platform, based on Mr. Fram measurement before over the computer meetings, is the, it's 3'6. That cause a, a fire hazards. The code chapter, I'm sorry. The, the New Jersey Building Edition Table 705.8 is required exactly a minimum 5 feet for any windows at the property, at the property line. So the window well has two type of windows, one window projecting to the property line and one window parallel to the property line. If we look at the new design, the new plans that we have it, it shows the parallel to the property line is 4'4, which is not comply with the, with the code requirement. The, the perpendicular window is 3'6 from the center point, which is 1'6 from the property line from the corner of the window, and it still is not complying with the code. What gonna happen is, these, these windows are creating a fire hazards and life threaten to the congregation that they're using the stairs up and down. If any fire happened, got, got forbidden in any apartment, that means we have to close, or the city or the fire department will close that second means of egress, and this will impact the whole service in the church. What we're requiring is, there is no window at the side yard, or move the, all the windows 5 feet away from the property line. And also requiring that window well to be moved away from the fire stair, I'm sorry, from the second means of stairs platforms at all. So that's the, the first point. And the second point is, the, I don't, I don't know, am I allowed to continue?
Go ahead, finish the statement.
So the, the second problem is, during the supportive excavation, they're excavating 15 feet right below these stairs foundations. We need to see a design plans and the design calculation shows there is no movement or, or adjustment of that far, second means of egress, otherwise it will impact the whole activity of the church. The third, we met with all the professionals in the field, and this makes us very, very concerned, they're related to the demolition, they're telling us, close the side yard, close the second means of egress, vacate this area, we're gonna get just a, an excavator and demolish the building quickly, with no protection, with no fence, with no vibration monitoring, with any site safety plans or site closure or anything, therefore it's causing a big issue to us to concern about. And I would like to comment in the 1-inch, if you, if you allow me for a second, the code, the chapter I can come back again, I, I'll, I'll wait on the line, I'm sorry. I need to finish, there's important things.
Calm down, slow down, and finish the statement with respect to the 1-inch, please.
Okay. The, the code is required 2-inch minimum seismic gap for 11-story building, and we are requiring this 2-inch at our property, even if there is building or no building, because of the seismic of the building and seismic drift, the chapter 16 and building code is requiring 2-inch minimum. How to seal it, how to do MSIL, how to waterproofing, how to do protection, that's the architect's requirement, but the requirement is 2-inch minimum gap, and we are requiring the 2-inch at our property line. So that's the second thing. Big gap, he can do MSIL.
But you're on the other side, you're not the 1-inch piece.
I'm speaking my side, even if there is no building, the code still require 2 buil, 2 inches, even if I
Understood, but
If I, if I build in the future, I have to leave 2 inch for him too. That's required by code.
Understood, but that's not the 1-inch that was testified to.
I know, he's speaking about one side, but I'm speaking my side, I'm, I'm deeming 2 inches, not showing in the plans.
Say that again.
I'm requiring 2-inch in the church side, which is not showing in the plans, as a seismic gap.
2 inches.
Yes, that's the code requirement, not me. It's still, it's not, if I, if I
There's 5 feet between your building
That's now, what about in the future if I redevelop my property?
Whoa, 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 whoa.
No, that, that's a zoning, that, that's a code requirement, it's not Magdi requirement.
Talk about Talk about the code requirement with respect to the fire stair egress. Your position is the code requires 5 feet. Yes?
Yes. From, from the edge of any windows or balconies.
Did you have this conversation with Mr. Harrington and his team, or no?
Multiple times since December, now about 20 times.
I figured you did.
Yes, and did it not comply enough?
Mr. Harrington, this gentleman is saying that your architect is designing a building that is not to construction code. That's what he's saying, as far as I'm hearing it. Is that how you hear it? That, that's how I hear it, and that's how Okay. That's how the discussion has gone in the past, and they disagree. They, I've been there, where the discussion has gotten back and forth, where Magdi has, has his opinion as to it, my, my, our architect says, no, we are code compliant, and we, we can, we can show the board why, either, you know, now or later, because it's, it's a window, it's within a window well, on a side, and, and it's not a lotline window. So I believe, and I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but I believe his, his interpretation is that, that, that side window counts as, as a, the 5 feet, it's, but as a lotline window. We're saying, no, it doesn't, and my, my architect actually has a letter from the DCA to confirm that, because it was an issue that was discussed back and forth, so we respectfully disagree.
So the side windows are closer to the stair platform, any fire happened in that side window, it gonna, the fire department will close our second means of egress. Can we move the entire window well away from the stairs? That's one thing. Second, the lotline windows is 4'4, not 5 feet. The code is straightforward in saying 5 feet minimum requirements. If the side window is a gray area in the code, but it's still causing life hazards and threaten for all congregation, then it's
I understand the argument. I understand the argument.
I, I trust that the commissioner will not gonna prove a condition causing life threat to all public. This is a life threat.
Regardless of what we do, if what you're saying is right, nobody should issue a building permit. We're not able to issue building permits. So I understand Wait a minute, sir. I understand what you're saying. I wanted, for purposes of the record and the board, for you to tell me that you have been speaking with them. Mr. Harrington admits that you've been speaking with them. Mr. Harrington admits that he knows you and knows the issue that you're raising, that his professional and you do not agree on the point. So the board will weigh your testimony as a licensed engineer versus Mr. Harrington's experts, and the board will make a decision, but the board doesn't interpret building code. So in the event that we approve something that isn't code compliant, shame on an applicant, they're gonna have a problem and not get a building permit.
So
Anybody that says it's code compliant, when it turns out it's not.
Okay, can I, can I answer about the building permit?
No, you cannot, sir.
I'll wait on the line again.
You can't.
You had your three minutes. You had your three minutes.
Actually, you had way over two. Good evening.
I do. Father Thomas Nashid, I'm a priest at 835 Bergen Avenue in St. George's Church. I do have a few handouts. Tell me when is the best time to bring them?
You need to show them to Mr. Harrington. You need to identify them and we can mark them perhaps. So Father, if you could just tell me what you handed him. Mr. Harrington, have you ever seen these before?
I have not. I have no objection for them being submitted for what they are. It appears to be a letter from my client to Father Tom, Father Thomas, and then some photographs of the site, but I would know for the record, they're not scaled or signed or sealed.
Very good. We're gonna mark them as O2.
I have extra copies if you like.
I just, I have to do this. A lot of what I do, I have to do, Father.
Sir, do whatever you need to do.
So for purposes of the record, I am gonna mark this as O2. This is a letter dated what appears to be March 21st, 2025. It appears to be from 829 Bergen Avenue LLC. Mr. Harrington has stipulated that that is his client. It is addressed to Father Thomas. And again, it is dated March 21st, 2025. Single-page letter. Second document is four pages. We're gonna mark it as O3 for purposes of the record. Page one is identified as the south side of 835 Bergen Ave Church. Two photos. Second page, south side 835 Bergen Ave, two photos. Third page, 829 Bergen Ave, current project plan. Page four is actual size and proximity of firescape and extended wall to property line. I will note for the record that Mr. Harrington noted his objection to the photographs in terms of scale. So that is preserved for purposes of the record. So Father Tom, if you have multiple copies of this, we can pass them out so commissioners can follow along. Again, commissioners, O2 is the letter, O3 is the photograph packet. And I just ask that if and when you have questions about it, you notate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Father Thomas, you have three minutes and I'm gonna start your clock now.
You do have a long night, but this is our third time here. We love spending our Tuesday nights in the summer in the zoning board meetings. I'm not gonna talk about parking burden to the neighborhood or traffic burden or storefront burden or obstruction to church services burden. But I do wanna come for the record to discuss major safety issues due to the fact, the size of the building. The building is built to the property line, to the fact is a high foot traffic and congestion, traffic congestion and due to the fact that this project neighbors a public assembly building that a lot of people don't comprehend the safety that comes with it and the responsibility that comes with it as a public assembly building. And that's why I'm going for the record to let everyone be responsible if there's any safety issues that are not taken into consideration. I'm just gonna use few examples. I'm not going in depth as Magde alluded, but this is an old building. I do have concern with asbestos. We have not seen any reports about asbestos. There's a lot of kids, a lot of schools, a lot of traffic. I would worry very much when the demolition happens, if it happens, or is there gonna be asbestos or not? That's one. Until now, the church had requested demolition plans. Not just a simple sheet that says demolish the building. We requested demolition plans that shows us all kind of precautions and the sequencing of the demolition. Why? Because it's very important and I'll explain why. This is why I brought these pictures. In March, in this letter, we received a letter from the developer, and by the way, nothing personal to the developer at all. In March, a notice for demolition. How did the G C or the developer get a permit for demolition without fulfilling the required safety requirements for demolition? That's a question. Moving on, last meeting. And if you reviewed the video, I think you, sir, and Mr. Lipsky asked the question, how far the building property or well they're building from the church? The answer was five feet. I brought these pictures. I'm not an engineer, just some common sense and knowledge of the building that I grew up in. You could see the first picture on the left is our church. The right is 829 Bergen Avenue.
You're on page one, sir?
Page one, the first picture on the left.
Thank you.
And with a tape measure, it shows six inches from our fire egress. I'm sorry, half of the time was giving out the handouts, right? So who's gonna protect this method of egress? What happens if the integrity of the method of egress and the firescape is compromised in a public assembly building? We're gonna be shut down. We're not gonna allow people to come and pray and be assembled in an unsafe building. We will never allow that. And God forbid, one day of service, shut down. This is gonna go to a different level altogether. You're taking away our constitution right, point blank. You understand why picture two in. I'm wrapping it up as we speak. Picture, let's jump to picture, page two. First picture on the left. One of the method of egress is 26 inches away from the building, from the property line. There's part of the church is five feet. So when the architect said five feet, that was, I think he misspoke or and therefore it's misleading because, and you'll see in the last picture, half of the church property is a lot less than five feet away from the property line. Third page is what was presented to the board. I pulled it from online where it shows the fire exit on our property. But the following page, page four, it shows the actual width of the fire exit and our means of egress, it shows definitely does not represent the true picture. I, so my question is, my understanding is by law, you cannot demolish, use machinery within 10 feet of the property line of the neighbor. How they gonna demolish without jeopardizing the firescape, which is only six inches away and the other means of egress, which is 26 inches away without jeopardizing the safety of our people? But on the plans, it doesn't, none of this is showing. And I'm simply concerned with the safety of the people. We're not asking to eliminate the project, but we're asking for a project that benefits the neighborhood, not burden the neighborhood. And that's all I'm asking and I hope the safety concerns are considered in this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're gonna take a 10 minutes break and we will resume back in 10 minutes. Thank you. Order, please, order. We need to resume our meeting. Mike, you ready? Our next speaker, we're backed into public speaking on 829 Bergen Avenue.
Yes. I do. Mina Abadir, 605 Pavonia Avenue is my mother and also live in Rutherford, New Jersey. So back and forth every day.
You have three minutes.
I'll try before he started three minutes, I'll try to speed roll. I've been practicing within the three minutes all the points that I.
I'll start your time right now.
Okay. Basically, after two years of meetings for the proposed development of 829 Bergen Avenue, the community and the previous developer had an agreement to include parking. After reselling the property, this new developer tried putting this as an as-is application to take advantage of the many variances previously approved. To him and your board, we're looking the other way and accepting this. To pretend he is working with the community, this new developer had just one quick Zoom meeting with the community. Most recently, to take advantage of the new zoning now put in place of not requiring parking for this location, he sneakily tried to do a bait and switch by doing minor changes to make this now a new application in the last few weeks. In addition to that, the developer has sent the church.
Sir, sir, sorry, sir, you can't close those doors. If you could ask the officers to have everybody that's in the hallway making too much noise to move down the hallway, I'd appreciate that.
Can I respectfully give the, at least couple of the minutes?
Yeah, I paused your time, no worries. Seems like every second is counted.
Most recently, to take advantage of the new zoning now put in place of not requiring parking for this location, he sneakily tried to do a bait and switch by doing minor changes to make this now a new application in the last few weeks. In addition to that, the developer has sent the church an expedited demolition notice right after the Zoom meeting without providing then a public safety plan, which the city had also successfully put a blind eye to. Key factors to take in consideration is the serious need of a proper traffic study that should be required. We are alerting planning board and the public to please oppose this development and the media has been closely monitoring and is here tonight also taking notice of clear inconsistencies between treatment from the board to the community and favorable treatment to the developer as now being noticed all by four or five churches within one block radius and just now having informed all of what had changes are happening and being proposed. Key points to consider, no loading and unloading zone, which will obviously increase traffic and create safety hazards. New variances, changes and setback in adding retail space. No parking, which originally approved, will obviously increase parking traffic on the streets for residents as well as stop and go for food delivery and transportation operators. Four, no clear public safety plan to get approved prior to construction, which the developer's architect as well as their attorney ignorantly indicated on the Zoom call that they were not aware it is needed until one of our highly qualified engineers sided on the call. He has to have 6,000 applications on his belt in New York City and also warned about potential major safety accidents and concerns to the general public, again for surrounding schools, churches, residents within a block radius. Fadi Habil, the engineer who cited this concern on the Zoom call, is unfortunately traveling today as this meeting has been previously scheduled many times, but wanted to shed the light on a serious matter, which is the site safety plan. The G C received a demo permit without a proper site safety plan that shows the sequence of demolition, the means of the methods of demolition and how to abutting neighbors will be supported structurally and protected while demo is in progress and completed. Five last traffic study that was admitted with the prior developer intentionally not taking account of high traffic times within during the week during school and weekend church services for all the five churches around this one block radius. This new application should require a proper traffic study to be done before any approvals, and I mean proper. Jersey City Code 34517 says a proper and repeat proper traffic study is required. We respectfully demand a new traffic study to be done during the high traffic times and taking a proper look at the application variances requested instead of accepting this as an as-is application before and now accepting this as a new application, which clearly is, it is not. Finally, a big shout out to Commissioner Torres for previously voting no, asking the right questions and caring for the well-being of the community at large instead of speed rolling approval. And the city now changed the parking requirements to meet the need of developers because the variances keep adding up and up. Big thank you to Rich Padriano, Mira Prince and Joyce Waterman. Thank you.
Thank you. I know we are still on public speaking, but there is questions through the board and I would like to ask if we can just put a pause on the public section at this time. And I would like to ask Mr. Harrington, if you can please bring up your architect. There is some questions regarding some of the exhibits, sorry.
Okay. So Mr. Harrington, I think for everybody's benefit, obviously we have members of the public. I don't know, do you have a copy of what we marked as O3, which are the photographs that Father Thomas had introduced?
We do.
So I guess let's lay some groundwork. Obviously, the photographs depict an existing condition. Sir, have you been to the site in the past two weeks?
Yes, no, not the past two weeks, but previously I have.
When was the last time you were at the site?
A few months ago. I went around with Mr. Magde Zeki here from the church just to check the existing conditions and to confirm the survey findings.
Sir, do you have the photographs marked as O3 in front of you?
I do.
And on page one of O3, it says that this photograph is the south side of 835, which would be the church's building. I'm looking at the left-hand side photograph. If I'm looking at it correctly, that photograph is taken from the rear of the church looking east towards Bergen Avenue. Is that factually accurate?
I believe so.
Okay. Does this photograph accurately represent the existing condition that you observed back in the springtime when you were at the property?
It does.
Okay. And the right-hand side photograph on page one is just a close-up of the left-hand side photo facing in the same direction, taken from the same vantage point? Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Okay. These aren't trick questions. Page two of the photographs provided. This is identified again as south side of 835. So again, this photograph appears to be taken with, in the opposite direction with the photographers back towards Bergen, looking back towards the rear of the property. Do you agree?
I agree.
And can you tell which way the right side photograph is taken?
I cannot tell from what are we measuring to here. But we can confirm with, I'm not very, I'm not 100% clear, but if you'd like to confirm with the person who took the photo. But I can tell that the left-hand side is taken with the back to the street.
Ephraim, if you don't know, you don't know. That's the answer.
Right.
And the reason I'm asking, and forgive me, I don't believe that the father is still here. Oh, Father, can you come forward? And Father, did you take these photographs?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So on page two, the right side photograph. When you took this photograph, is your back to Bergen?
Yes.
And this is looking back towards the fire escape?
Yeah.
And that fire escape is the same fire escape we see in the left photograph?
Correct.
Correct.
So that clarifies that aspect of it. Thank you, Father.
Go on.
Question for the Father?
Okay.
On the first page with the six-inch measurement?
Yes.
Is that the same, that looks like the second level, right?
No, the starts from, actually, the fire escape starts from the ground.
It starts from the ground?
Yes.
That six inches works its way up, but you showed me here.
So this is on the, on the ground. This is actually supported on the ground.
You're standing on the ground in this photograph on the left-hand side?
No, I'm standing on like the first landing.
That was...
Yeah.
Okay.
But the step starts, it's not the typical fire escape that you see in the buildings with a drop-down ladder, you actually start walking up, because it's the means of ignorance as well.
Understood.
Okay, yes.
On an upper landing?
Yes.
And that railing, as your measuring officer?
Yes.
Goes all the way down to the ground?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's your belief that that six inch carries all the way to ground?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Harrington? I guess you heard the concern regarding the fire escape and the five feet, and we had the discussion regarding how your witness doesn't agree with the gentleman. Can we pull up the architectural drawing and go through that and how your witness believes that it's code compliant?
Absolutely.
So this was, can you zoom out, sir?
Sure.
This...
This is the first floor plan, and this is, I'm using the same exhibit that was marked in the original testimony.
Yeah, I believe this, this slide deck was marked as A2 on July 15.
So let's start. The footprint of the building. The four corners of the building are the same dimensions as previously approved?
Yes, correct.
So... Can you identify where the issue with respect to the building code and life safety is on this drawing?
I believe they are, they are talking about this window well, which I am working on the screen, that's pretty much the only window well that's, that you can see on the ground floor.
Can you enlarge that?
Uh, sure, absolutely. And it's worth mentioning that we had another well, a little bit west of that well here, which we, we listened to our neighbor, and we closed it up in the first floor, and we added on top of it another four-foot fence, just as a side note, but back to...
Was that change as a result of a number of meetings that you have had with their professionals?
Correct.
So, could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Yes.
So if you were willing to close that window well, why didn't you, or why did you choose not to close this one by the office?
So the concern in the window, the smaller window well to the west, was because the kids were playing in the backyard of the church, and they didn't want, you know, kids to throw things at the building or throw a ball or something, and that was the concern. So we listened, then we were able to, we managed to rearrange our floor plan to enclose that well, or, you know, and make this go away. But on the other end...
If I, I'm sorry, if I could just add to clarify, apparently, there's a basketball court back there, so there was concern that the basketball would, would possibly hit the window, you know, unintentionally, so we took that away.
But let me, all right, and that's fair enough, but during your multiple meetings with the community, the second window well, the one that still is in existence behind the office B107, did that ever come up for conversation and...
It did, and we reached to a, an agreement to increase the height of that wall, which I can show on a sketch towards the end of that presentation. As you see here, we increased the height of the wall to six foot high CMU wall, and on top of it, we added a four-foot fence. So in total, it's 10-foot high separation.
To add to that, part of the discussion was a concern that someone could come out of the window and jump onto the fire escape, so I think the wall was, and the fence was to prevent that.
I need you to zoom out. So... It does not appear that the church seems to agree with that feeling that they're okay with this. It seems from where I'm sitting and hearing here tonight, they have an issue with this window well. Is that, is that a fair statement based on what you're hearing?
From, from what I heard, yes.
Sometimes I hear differently up here.
From what I heard, yes. And, you know, we're willing to, as we've been always trying to communicate, and we've been communicating, we're willing to see what else we can do to satisfy their concerns. However, I would like to, if it's the right time, I would like to talk about the fire issue, because, sure.
I... I want clarification myself about this wall with the fence on top. I, I'm not following that. Can you explain that to me?
So, let me just say, it sounds weird to me that you put a window looking into a wall, but...
So, we're, because right behind this window well, there's an office on the ground floor. And, you know, we're hoping to get some, at least some ambient light and some air into that office. This will be, this will function as the, the leasing office. And, you know, it will be very enclosed if, if we just totally get rid of the window. So we tried to reach a happy medium. And we increased the height of the CMU wall, and we added on top of it a fence to address the concern.
But it, it provides light and air within that, that room. And could you address, you know, how operable that, that window is?
So, th- this is a limited operable window, meaning it only opens about a four-inch gap. It doesn't swing fully. They have a limiter on it.
And did you address the, the, the fire code issue that Magdi had spoken about?
Yes, so specifically, I believe Magdi was referencing this window, which is perpendicular to the property line. And, you know, I, I wanted to make sure 100%, I contacted DCA. That was a few months ago, when we first, you know, sat down together and we talked about the project. And the explanation I heard from DCA, which then I shared with, with Magdi, it was that this window is permitted, and that the code is discussing the window parallel to the property line, and to correct a statement that Magdi mentioned, which is the five-foot, anything less than five feet, you cannot have a window. Actually, it's three feet. And if we're discussing about this window at this location, parallel to the property line, this window is actually four foot four from the property line. So we're way more than three feet, and I'm comfortable that this is code compliance. And if there's anything, you know, that we need to address, which we would have addressed it, but I'm confident that this, this is code compliant.
So I just... So we're all clear here. The drawing and what is being proposed is to build a six-foot-high wall on the property line with a four-foot fence above it. And then inside of that in your building is a window well, but the window well goes the entire 11 stories up.
Correct.
And we have windows inside of that, and now the question is whether or not that is code compliant. And we all understand that the church and their members have a grave concern about this.
In that, to, to address why the wall and why the fence, that, that was to address it at the, at the ground floor, they're concerned that they may have people coming across the property line, so that prevents that. The window well is a common element in, in buildings that you create, you can't have the, on, the windows on the property line.
Mr. Harrington, I, I think we all understand that. I think, I just want to be very clear for everybody what that is, what's being proposed.
So you're saying the window's going up?
Correct.
All, all the windows, even the first-floor window, only open four inches?
Four inches.
So nobody could go out that window?
There's a limiter that's, that would be installed on the window to prevent...
Yeah, I've seen them all the time in the buildings.
Yeah, especially high-rise.
Yeah, the bomb I have this summer, building's hot, I'm working in a hot building, I can't open the window.
I wish we could.
I understand it clearly.
So counsel, it sounds like this was what the applicant thought would address the concerns of the neighbors, but it does not sound like this actually does that. That's kind of what I'm hearing. So I would never tell anybody what to do, that's not my role. I advise, obviously, but I'm just putting it out there that it kind of sounds like maybe this doesn't hit the mark.
And we also want to be good neighbors. So... It's your choice, Mr. Harrington.
Understood, and, you know, I, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, but I, I do want to stay for the, for the record that, that we have been working with them, and there's a perception here, or a perceived perception here, that we haven't worked with the community. We had a Zoom meeting for two-plus hours on this, two-plus hours. So for people to say there's no meeting whatsoever, that's false from, from the get-go.
So, Mr. Harrington, I think it is fair to say that both fathers, right, and the engineers said that they have met with you and that there were these Zoom meetings, so I think there may be different members of the public, but if you're telling me that everybody in the public was invited to the Zoom?
They were.
Okay. I don't... We're not going to call out from the audience, but I appreciate the comment that the applicant is speaking with the community and trying to avail themselves of the opportunity to speak to the community.
And I would add that our professionals and their professionals have met numerous times. We've had meetings at my office with their counsel and the professionals. So the Coptic Church is the main neighbor here, and, and the concerns for their building. So we have been, I probably, we've had more meetings on this application, probably between professionals than any other application I, I've been a part of. So there's, there's been a lot of back and forth. This is an issue that, that, that we try, this is, this was our solution for, for addressing that, and then we, we also addressed the, the basketball issue. And here's, here's the thing, backing up, that, that community meeting, why, why not another meeting there? This application is, is all about, it's the same, same building, right? It's either, the prior one had parking, this one doesn't have parking. And, and I said, with all due respect to, to numerous comments we had, and we had close to, I think, 100 people on the Zoom, is that you have a project either with parking or without parking, it's not a gray area, because if there's not a compromise between that, it's, it's either you have it or you don't. And the purpose of the application is, is to not have the parking. And, and I'm really trying to filter it down, you know? So, you know, we can, we can try to address this, and we have, we have been meeting with them, and try to, try to, you know, address, you know, any other issues, but ultimately, that's the crux of the application before you. And, you know, we think it's a safer condition, there's, there's a lot of, you know, there's comments about a safer condition here, there's, we, we understand, the Coptic Church is, it's very busy, that's, that's a very busy sidewalk. We didn't particularly, I know my client in, in, in the initial application didn't particularly want the parking, but he provided the parking. We thought it, it is a safer condition without having cars coming in and out of this project. And we also, this, this project is creating a greater sidewalk, a larger sidewalk, front yard sidewalk, so that's going to help. So I just, I, I understand, and I, you know, I've, I've been doing this long enough to read the tea leaves, so, you know, we're going to take a step back and we'll, we'll take a look at this. But, you know, there's, there's going to be a, you know, more public comment, but I, I wanted to get that out, you know, now, because, you know, we are trying to work with them, but at the, ultimately, it's parking or no parking. Safer condition with cars coming out onto Bergen Avenue or not. I, we have a lot of congregants, it's like, so people going in and out, what's safer? I, I say it's safer without parking. So with that, with that said...
Sure.
Commissioner?
Absolutely.
So basically, you're saying whether it's parking or no parking? And who's going to make that decision?
Well, that's, that's why we have the application before the board, the...
Do you want the board to make that decision, whether it would be parking or no parking?
Well, if, if...
Well, that's not fair, right?
I can adjust it. If, if, if the applicant were to decide we want parking, then we don't have to be here. We have an existing approval.
I would agree with you.
Yeah, so that's, so our position and, and application to the board is that we think it's a better project without parking. So that's why we're presenting it to you. So, yeah, ultimately, like every application, it's up to the board to decide.
On the merits, based on the testimony provided, satisfying the burden of proof, but yes, in the event that the application is not approved, Mr. Harrington's client can move forward with the already-approved building with parking.
And we have, again, we have been working with the Coptic Church for an access agreement with the demolition issues, it's not, we're, we're not, I think we're close, it depends on who you talk to, we've got business terms all agreed to, but all...
Mr. Harrington, I can't mediate this. Granted, I'd get it done in two hours, but I just can't.
I just need the board to know the perception is, you know, out here is that we're not doing anything, and we're, we, we, we made, you know, commitments to provide these plans to the, to the church and their professionals before anything started, you know, before the, we have a demolition permit, but we, we, we're not, we don't have the access agreement signed yet, you know, so I just want, you know, my client's kind of being painted in a, in a, in a picture that, that he shouldn't be in.
I don't think we're looking at it that way.
No, I, I...
As you just said, I mean, we're looking at it in a sense that, what you just got finished explaining to me before?
Yep.
You already approved to go with, with the, what you call, with the parking. You know, we're trying to see if there's a possibility, we, but I want to see if there's a possibility that maybe you can have a further discussion with them, and keep them, you know, keep them happy along with yourselves, and have you, the party, not take advantage of give and take. I understand that, too.
Mr. Harrington, I think you're reading between the lines here, the consensus kind of, of the board. Maybe you want to talk to your client?
Well, no, I, I...
Do you want to proceed with the application?
No.
Okay.
Not tonight, that's, that's what I said.
Exactly.
I, I read, that's what I said, I've been doing this long enough to read the tea leaves.
Yeah, you, you can see the consensus of the board here, so I would suggest that you...
Honest to Carrie, you two, another day?
Yes.
And be good neighbors and have conversations with the church, with the key members of the church, with the fathers that came here.
That's, we have, that's, that's what I was, that's, that's what I was trying to, to tell everybody, we have.
Some consensus has to be made, that's why the fathers are here, because I guess they're not getting... But Eddie has a question for the architect.
I just have a quick question, but you took down the picture.
Oh, I, I can connect again.
So go to your picture, no, go to this picture, number, first page.
And you'll be students to me, buddy. Go ahead, I know where you're going.
The six-inch, the six-inch space between the fire escape railing and the wall. So you're saying you're building, the new building, on the same property line as this wall that's existed there? So you're saying you're building, the new building, on the same property line as this wall that existed there? And what I see on the screen looks more than six inches. Are we gonna, when you build your building, is it going to be six inches away from this fire escape?
So this is, is this photo taken where the wall would be? I'm not too sure, but...
I don't know if it's where the wall would be, it's where the property line is.
Right, but it's where the property line is, and...
I guess the question is, the building as proposed is on the property line?
It is.
Is it...
Is this the property line?
Is this building existing on the property line?
We don't know.
And are you proposing to be six inches off of the edge of that fire escape? If that's accurate, which I get...
Because to your drawing, to your drawing, it looks more than six inches. If you go to your architect you just had on the screen...
The building or to the fire escape?
Fire escape from the property line. It's greater than six inches. So I'm seeing, I don't see the...
So we are building to the property line, yeah?
So your property line, so, which might not be the same as what we're seeing here. We don't know that.
I'm not positive where...
Positive for that.
Where this is taken exactly, but I do believe that this wall is in our property. So I believe that this wall is on the property line. How much we're encroaching into the neighbors, I'm not sure. I mean, this wall, I mean?
I don't, I don't think you're...
But yes, we are within those six inches.
I don't, I'm not talking about the windows. I'm just looking at the fire escape, the way the fire escape is, looks almost two feet away from the wall. And the way the picture shows it, it looks like six inches away from the wall.
Correct.
That's what I said, when you go back to your drawing...
Do you know the measurement?
So we took it off the survey, which, you know, a licensed surveyor did the survey. We can go back and double-check it, but...
Mr. Harrington, what would you like to do?
If I could get this carried to the second meeting, September, September 23rd?
Let me say this, is that early, you know, Father John came up here and said, "How many times this can has been kicked down the road," right? We still have about a half dozen to, or more speakers who want to speak. I think before we move, I would allow them to make their statement on record. And then it'll be part of our YouTube or transcript that whoever's not here can review it. And fairness to them, because they keep coming out, I mean... And again, if it's about the community, let them speak.
But you've got to understand something, one is already approved to go.
No, like, fair enough, but it's like first...
That is understandable, but if we're asking the applicant to go back to the drawing board, then there will be further comment.
Let's pull the membership, because I'm not asking that. I would say let it go forward.
Okay.
Whoa, 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 pull the membership on what?
Commissioners, on whether or not to carry this or to, you know, he's requesting it, but, you know what, I mean...
Mr. Harrington is requesting to carry the application to look at this issue. That doesn't mean there's going to be a change. He could come back and say, "You know what? We decided we're not meeting with anybody," and blah, 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 blah. I don't think that's what's going to happen, but he may. He may come back and say, "We met and we're moving forward as it was proposed." He may come back and say, "We've made a change." So Mr. Harrington is asking to carry the application. We either grant that request. Mr. Harrington doesn't have to move forward. He can, right now, say, "Okay, I'll withdraw the application if you're not going to allow me to carry the application," which, that's, that's not the way the proceedings work. We have concerns that we're flagging. We want to give Mr. Harrington an opportunity to meet with the community who has legitimate concerns. So, does the board want to poll whether to carry this? I don't think it's fair for all of the members of the public to comment on something that may get changed, and then...
Yeah, but to that point, on record, Mr. Harrington just said, and I have the utmost respect for Mr. Harrington, the highest respect, he said on record that at all of his applications, that this particular one, he's had more community meetings upward into, including in his own office. So I mean, we could, you know, have, you know, these meetings, and fair enough, I mean, we're uncovering things. But I would say let the public speak, and if we decided that at that point to carry it, to carry it. So that their voice, they've been here two or three times.
If I could, it's not my decision, it's the board's decision, but if I could add something. I had somewhat of a similar situation on an application before the zoning board, which continued. The public showed up, we showed up, and it is, you know, it's tough being here all the time. At some point, some meetings, they let the public speak who did not, couldn't make it to the next meeting or didn't want to come to the next meeting. And then they say their piece and it's done. Sometimes it cuts down on the line. But as you said, counsel, if we come back with changes, then it's a little bit different and people, I think, still have the right to speak again. So I don't think it cuts off their right to speak on any changed application. But we have been here a number of times, and if the board, if there's public who wants to speak now and get, you know, get, say their piece, maybe the board wants to do that. And then we cut it off, you know, we're done, you know, right now. So I'll defer to the board.
So just to your point, counsel, and I know you're a fair person, I think that's a great suggestion. One of the other engineers, who I guess was part of the conversation, is not here tonight, couldn't be here tonight. So of these six people or seven people that, who may want to speak tonight, but couldn't get here to the next meeting, at least their testimony would be on record. That's, you know, if we're saying about openness, transparent, and hearing everybody's voice, and maybe something that one of them has to say might strike you in a way that says, "Oh, I didn't hear it that way."
I'm not, I'll stop. I'm not saying you have to close the public. I'm just saying if there's public here who want to speak tonight so that they have to, don't have to come back, maybe you give them that opportunity, but that's the board's decision.
Whatever the board wants, they all with us.
That would be my preference.
I don't want anybody feeling we're shutting them out, you know what I mean?
Just keep in mind, if there's a change, anybody who wants to come back and speak again, is going to come back to speak again.
We don't have a choice.
No, that's just...
We don't have a choice.
Doesn't mean, doesn't mean that we're going to cut the amount of speakers, that's it.
I understand, but you still owe them, it's their prerogative. You want to be as open as possible and whatever, you give everybody an opportunity. So maybe they don't all like the change, but everybody else does. Or maybe when we look at it, we might say, "You know what, there's nothing wrong with this," or "There's something wrong with it."
But I agree with you, Commissioner, at one point, because they're here already, if they want to speak, they're here. I agree with you on that.
All right, so we're going to continue our public speaking. Thank you.
And the understanding is, is that we're asking, or counsel's asking, to leave here, to go and consult, to come up with a comparable or an acceptable outcome. Not that they're going to go back and draw the lines like in One Kings, where Solomon says to the two mothers, "Okay, I'll cut the baby in half," you know? I don't think that's going to happen.
It is worth saying that they don't have a parking variance. It is worth saying they don't have a parking variance. That is the law.
That was, right, that was understood when I asked that, well, when I got clarity in terms of what the outcome of the vote would be on this, if it was approved or defeated, that there was still in place a parking option. But that, not that, I mean, whatever their conversation is, as counsel made it clear to me, that shouldn't be something that I entertain in my voting on that, after Councilman Bogiano spoke.
It is the law, it's the law that Council Bogiano voted into place.
Oh, he says he didn't.
And so, and to that point, Councilman Bogiano voted on both no parking and parking ordinances, because it was passed unanimously.
Yes, Resolution 23103, which created the NC3 district and mapped it onto this location, was passed unanimously by Councilman Bogiano, as was Resolution 21077, which is our inclusionary zoning ordinance. And as an IZO project, there are no parking minimums to apply. Any IZO project citywide that applies to. And Councilman Bogiano did indeed vote for both ordinances.
But he stood here tonight and said to the contrary, but I wish he was here so he could respond to that, but he's not. So it's...
All right, so we're going to go back to public speaking, so our next... And sorry, we're very sorry.
Yes, I do. It's Stephen Dworkin, S.T.E.V.E.N.D.W.O.R.K.I.N., and I live at 34 DeKalb Avenue on the same block as 829.
You have three minutes, I'll start your time now.
Okay, so I'm going to speak to an issue besides the parking. In addition to living on the same block as where this is going to be constructed, I also happen to have been a member of the construction committee of the Journal Square Community Association for many years. And we had many developers come and talk to us about the buildings that are sprouting up, including Mr. Namdar's buildings and/or Long Bergen Arches. And we had a reputation for not being not in my backyard. We were very, you know, pro-development, and Mr. Harrington, I believe, has appeared before us many times on many of these projects. So I just want to make it clear that, you know, our orientation, but in all of the hundreds of professional large buildings that we reviewed in the Journal Square area, I just want to say that I have never seen one that was close to being as out of place on the block as this building. The rest of the block is, as you probably know, a three-story, very large apartment building taking up half the, almost half the block, and a five-story apartment building taking up most of the other half of the block. And in between is the church, which is partway between their two heights, so I guess about the equivalent of four stories. To insert an 11-story building on a 40-foot-wide lot in the middle of this block, it's the ultimate, sticking out like a sore thumb. The ultimate example of it is more like a piece of toast popping up out of the toaster in the middle of the block. And I would like to, and it is a direct result of the variances being requested here in terms of the minimum lot width and the minimum lot size. You know, as you're aware, it's the size of a lot where you would normally just put in a single-family house or a two-unit house, and here, 77 units. And it actually probably will look like a, one of the headstones from Spear Cemetery or perhaps Bergen Cemetery across the street being jammed into the middle of the block. And if, I would like to encourage you to take this opportunity to undo the mistake made previously. Otherwise, you're going to have architects coming down Bergen Avenue for years and decades, pointing out to their students the ultimate example of what a planning board should not do.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Yes. Gabriela Negah, G.A.B.R.I.E.L.L.A., and for my last name, N.A.G.E.H. I live in Bayonne, 86 West 54th Street. But I am a very active member of St. Jordan St. Louis Coptic Orthodox Church.
Gabriela, you have three minutes.
Okay. I am an active servant and member of St. Jordan St. Louis active, and very large church, as you know, on 835 Bergen Ave. And while I might not, while I might not have a large position or something, I do like to think that my voice might be valued in a situation like this. The development, the proposed development on 829 Bergen Avenue is 77 residential housing, it's like 77 residential apartments, 11 stories high with the floors worth of retail space. While this is amazing and great for the infrastructure in Jersey City, it just isn't feasible in terms of parking and our church. So I go to church every Sunday, there's four liturgical services every single Sunday, each packed more than the other. And being as someone who commutes from Bayonne, my family has five members, each one of us drives. So that's five spots for my one family of five members. So you can imagine in a church as large as ours, how many commute. And of course, as the traffic engineer said, Jersey City is very walkable, absolutely. But just because it's walkable doesn't mean people do walk. A lot of the times, it's more convenient to take a car. And when you're in such a large church that already struggles with the size of our community, and then you add a giant residential building like this right next to us with a lack of parking, makes our lives 10 times harder and even the residents 10 times harder. As much as those residents in that future building might not drive cars, I'm sure most of them still will. So I don't necessarily think it's feasible for us to move forward without parking. For the past two years, many people of the Coptic community have been in conversations and have, with the former developer, and have been involved in the ongoing dialogue with the former developer of the site. And we came to a happy agreement where, you know, they would have parking, which accommodates our site, and they would still get to have their building. What changed, I don't necessarily know logistically, and I don't know, I don't have enough expertise to be able to decide what changed or to say what changed. But I do know now that doesn't necessarily serve all the needs of the community anymore, as a bunch of people in this community are arguing for the same purpose, that we are struggling, and this building would, as much as it would help business, wouldn't necessarily help those who are already living there, and it would actually make our lives much harder. We are simply asking that you reconsider and go back and think about this, you know? Think of it from one of our perspectives. I know Councilman Rich Bogiano comes to our services on Easter and Christmas, as do some of you guys and some of the other council members. You guys can see firsthand how packed we are, and this is just our one church. I can't imagine, you know, the other residents who are living on the same block as us, you know, they struggle just as much as we do. We're there once or twice a week. I can't imagine, you know, everyone who lives there on a regular basis having to deal with the rest of the 77 apartments that are going to be built. So we're just asking you guys, you know, look at it from a residential standpoint. Someone like me, who's a basic resident and commuter in Jersey City. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I do. To Glenwood Avenue, Jersey City. I'm one block away from the construction building. Romany Wasil, accountant, active servant in St. Jordan St. Louis. R.O.M.A.N.Y. W.A.S.I.L.
You have three minutes?
Okay. I spoke about myself as a resident in just one block away from this. When the construction starts in the building, the big building in Jones Square, I take half an hour from my location to Indian Square. Imagine if the construction starts without any planning, at this time, at this point, the life will be more, more, more difficult. And I'm not agree with the traffic engineer about whatever he said. He's just like assignment online about your traffic, but the actual, he cannot imagine whatever we have in our life, in the life in this area. Okay, I have two years almost, I didn't park in Glenwood. When I park my car in the night, Friday night, I didn't want to move it anywhere. If just emergency, I will move it until Monday. About 77 residents, you have to put least restriction to don't let them have a car. At least each one have more car, additional 77 car in that area. And the time, at least one year and a half, when the, from a start point until they finish, we have at least half of Bergen will close. They said, "Okay, maybe just put the machine up the sidewalk." You cannot imagine you put all machine for this high building for just the sidewalk. At least you will close whole way, or... At least you will close hallway or halfway from building, from this street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Sorry.
Do you swear in your testimony tonight it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, can you state your name and give us your home address, please?
Name is Maryann Pham, M.A.R.Y.A.N.N. Last name Pham, F. like Frank, A.M. like Mary. Home address is 9 Elizabeth Court, Secaucus, New Jersey.
Ms. Pham, you have three minutes.
Thank you. So I have been a longtime resident of Jersey City for over 40 years, graduated schools here, did my community service hours here, longtime commuter using all the public transportation and also driving. And I've watched the emergence of Jersey City my whole life, growing up. I also actively attend and serve in the church. I'm also a church board member. So I'm not here to speak about the parking, but I will try to focus on what was already not said. I'd like to focus on safety concerns as well as the services and the use of our space. So with respect to the variances, it makes it very challenging, both the front, the rear, and the side variances that are being asked for. In addition to the secondary egresses that we've already spoken about, we also use the windows. We use the side windows to help air the inner church sanctuary while we're praying on the days that we are not using heat or cooling, because sometimes you can't run the AC when it's just cool enough, but not more, you know, but not cool enough to turn it on. So the opening of the windows and the use of it, just having that secondary, sorry, having that variance on the side, kind of makes that much more narrow and less private on the side of the lady side where we pray on that side of the church. Additionally, we use the backyard regularly. It is our only open air space in the concrete jungle that is Jersey City. There are no nearby parks that we can take our kids to. We use the backyard. That's what we grew up using. That's where we grew up playing basketball. And so we spoke, they spoke about shadowing on three sides, but they didn't talk about the shadowing that's going to happen in the backyard space. That is where we have the kids play. They spoke about the wall that's going to go up. It's only six feet plus a fence. However, what we have right now is a non-scalable wall. We're asking for them to reconsider the design of the sidewall and request them to put a non-scalable wall. Six feet high is not very high, plus a fence. That's not very high. Once you land up to six feet, you can climb over. This is Jersey City. We've had break-ins before. We know the area around us. And while it's developing and gentrifying and all these other things, it's still Jersey City, a very urban area. We also cannot control what people do inside their homes. So if they're playing loud music, if they're doing whatever they want to do to live, that's not, you know, for us to judge or control. But we also cannot control what our kids do or all the people that we serve. We don't serve saints. We serve the entire community. And so for the safety and the privacy of the children that are in the yard and for the safety and the privacy of those that reside in the building, we're asking for a 12-foot non-scalable wall, which is similar to what we have today. And with all due respect, I know that they want windows, but the windows are for office space. Offices don't necessarily need windows. So I'm asking for refusal of the front and back and side variances, for an inset in the front for loading and unloading, for a sidewall change where the windows are adjacent to the building.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is...
Do you swear in your testimony tonight it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you state your name and give us your home address, please?
Sure. Mona, M.O.N.A., last name Nashed, N.A.S.H.E.D., 527 Hobart Road, Paramus.
Ms. Nash, you have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Let me start by saying I was born and raised in Jersey City on a house right on Van Reepen Street, just a block away from the proposed development site. So I am extremely familiar with the very densely populated and busy neighborhood, to say the least. I've always been a very proud member of this community, but I come here to state that I'm a little bit less proud. Frankly, I'm disheartened to see the direction that things are going in Jersey City. Law-abiding citizens have always been held accountable, and it's about time that we hold developers accountable as well. I can't stand by and pretend that what's happening is okay. And I can't imagine that Jersey City is going to sit back and watch silently to allow laws to change to favor developers and not people. It's not fair to its residents. It's not fair to its patrons. It's not fair to anyone. This developer has been full of undesirable surprises, not only doing away with the agreed-upon parking, but also proposing the additional retail storefront, as many have already mentioned. Variances of rear yard setback, minimum lot size, minimum lot width, maximum permitted coverage. I may not be an engineer, but to me, this sounds like they're trying to fit something in a place where it simply does not belong or fit. Jersey City has been home to many families through the years, and we have schools and children everywhere. And as others have said, I'm honestly not sure how we think that demolition is going to safely happen on Bergen Avenue in close proximity to non-stop traffic and pedestrians and residents. It doesn't seem conceivable to me to be able to do it safely, which should be very concerning to everyone in this room. You can barely even stop for a minute to drop off seniors or handicapped passengers without completely stopping the traffic on Bergen Avenue. We all get that ordinances have changed for the worse, as far as most people in this room are concerned. But what solutions are being offered to the community? I have heard none so far. I'm asking that everyone take a, kindly take a step back and really scrutinize these details. We need to focus a little bit more on the safety and well-being of the people in Jersey City. I pray and hope that everyone in this room will, at the end of the day, do what's right for Jersey City. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Do you swear in your testimony tonight it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
After the record, can you state your name and give us your home address, please?
My name is Patrick Bebawi, P.A.T.R.I.C.K.B.E.B.A.W.I. I live in Jersey City, 881 Summit Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, in the Heights.
You have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Like I said, my name is Patrick. So I've been born and raised in Jersey City. I'm a proud resident of Jersey City. I was born here. I went to school here. And as I grew up, I serve in a nonprofit that is federally funded and just so I can serve Jersey City. That's why I'm here. I'm deeply concerned about the upcoming of the 77-unit apartment building. As we already know, Jersey City is very overly crowded. Like, we all, like, kind of knew that, like, we're kind of like sardines walking through the sidewalk. Our streets are jammed, schools are overpopulated, and our public transit is, like, very tight also. So I'm not going to speak about the parking, because, like, I guess that's been spoken about a lot. So public transit is very tight, as we all know. And it's going to be very hard for the patrons of the church to go to church on public transit with families of four to five people per family, and they have infants with them. So I guess that's something that we have to consider when it comes to the, I guess, the traffic coordinator, whoever he is. So the city has become very special to me. It's very lively, and I'm all for, like, all the development. I come from a background of economics, so, like, obviously, I love the growth of money. But this only comes with proper planning and the risks that come with it. Come with, like, pushing people out and sharing the community, which we've worked so hard to build. Growth should benefit the residents, not make it harder on them or a burden on them. I would like to ask you to rethink the long-term quality of life, to think about the long-term quality of life. Will this project really make Jersey City the place that we want it to become, or will it put it towards a downtrend? Thank you so much. I'd like you to consider our voices and the people that call Jersey City our lifetime homes.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you swear in your testimony tonight it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
After the record, can you state your name and give us your home address, please?
Marcel Louka, M.A.R.S.I.L. My last name is L.O.U.K.A., and I live in 238 Clinton Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey.
Ms. Louka, you have three minutes.
I'm here as a member of the congregation of the Church of St. George and St. Shunuda. I live in Jersey City, and my high school is also in Jersey City. As a kid who attends St. George and St. Shunuda and lives in Jersey City, our church is not just a place where people gather once a week for worship. It's truly our second home. Many of us spend many hours each week here in St. George and St. Shunuda, attending services, teaching Sunday School, singing in choir, volunteering and supporting community hours and events. I believe that the construction of the new project will possess real challenges for our congregation. Noise disruption, which will impact our ability to hold services, prayers, and educational programs, and safety risks which could endanger children, families, and elderly members who walk in and out of the church daily. Kids are present in church most of the time during the week. If you go to Bergen Avenue Friday nights, Saturday nights, and Sunday mornings, it's very, it's a very busy area. My family personally struggled with parking when we attend church. We have to leave our house, maybe extra 30 minutes just to find parking. And we park maybe like 15 minutes away, 20 minutes away, and walk to church. I would like to consider, I would like to ask you to consider this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Do you swear in your testimony tonight it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
After the record, can you state your name and give us your home address, please?
Andrew Seffin, last name's S.E.F.I.N. I live in 210 Mortimer Avenue, Rutherford, New Jersey.
Ms. Seffin, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I've spent most of my life in Jersey City. I was born and raised here. I went to school here. And when I finished college and joined the workforce, I also worked here. And as someone who spends most of my time in Jersey City throughout the week, I know as well as many of you, there's traffic everywhere, all throughout, especially in that area on Bergen Avenue, ever since the other two lanes were closed down. I don't see any possibility where 77 luxury apartments are built and the new residents don't come with vehicles. However, the argument I heard against putting the parking downstairs was that it raises a safety issue of the cars going in and out. A block and a half down from that site, there's a very active parking garage where there's no safety issue there. Around the corner from there, there's also a parking lot that serves a few buildings. No safety issue there. Two blocks further down into Journal Square, there's a very large parking garage, open on both sides. No safety issue there. And if you go on a Sunday near any one of them, that's the day that I generally go see them, they're full to the brim. They have signs outside saying we are at capacity. So I don't see any way where this could happen and all the residents in the area could be comfortable without parking being in place. And while I understand there are specific rules and guidelines, and while some things might not be required, I feel that a large part of the community, at least the ones aware of the situation, are against it. And for the people living in this area who will have to live with whatever congestion this creates, you know, after the developer finishes their project and leaves, you know, they're going to be very unhappy with it. They moved to Jersey City for the Jersey City they saw at the time when they came here, for the opportunity, for the comfort, for whatever other reasons. And I feel like this has a great impact on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Do you swear in your testimony tonight it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Michael Isaac. I live in 67 Prospect Avenue, Bayonne, New Jersey, active member in the church.
Ms. Isaac, you have three minutes.
Sure. Okay. I just want to make, what is the statistics we're measured to approve 77 units and retail space with the consideration of the high rate of the accidents of the area and the recent worst traffic in the nation? Do we consider the delivery worker, the public workers, taxi, and the transportation? Or provide safety access from the building to other, from the window to the stairs? We need sidewalk protection for our church, street closure, people access from the south to the church. The contractor obtained demolition permit without following codes requirements, no pre-construction survey, no demolition sequence, no list of demolition equipment, no protection of the public, no protection plans, no protection for our congregation across from the south, no vibration, no crack monitoring, no protection for the second means aggress during the support of activation, requirement signed and sealed plans and calculation related to support and protected stairs. Move the window well from this area adjusted to the fire escape. Please.
Thank you. Good evening.
Do you swear in your testimony tonight it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. David Negah, N-A-G-E-H is my last name. My address is 86 West 54th Street, Bayonne, New Jersey. I was actually raised here. I formerly lived in 160 Vroom Street, one of the adjacent streets to the project being built. Briefly moved to Bayonne. I did all my community service hours, as many of the parishioners here have spoken. And now I'm currently a resident physician at Christ Hospital. And so you can imagine that I am literally in this area seven days out of the week, every single day of the year, holiday, rain, snow, whatever you name it, I'm there, whether it's for a service or for my employment. So naturally, my commute from Bayonne actually takes me through either Bergen Avenue or Baldwin Avenue, or any of the parallel streets. I think something that's been emphasized, maybe not overtly, is the traffic and the congestion that's being caused. Just as of right now, from the current neighbors, from the school system that's just two blocks away, I think people actually have failed to mention that just recently, three buildings, 60 feet tall, 60 floors high, were just built for 2,000 units in Journal Square, just roughly four blocks away from this project. They're not full yet, yet the congestion is unbelievable. Can you imagine what adding 2,000 units are going to do in the next two to three, not even, maybe in the next year or two? Add 77 more units, tell me how it's going to be. My commute, when I wake up at 5:00 in the morning to get to the hospital, is 17 minutes. When I have to go to the clinic at 8:00 a.m., it's 55 minutes. Can you under... I want you to put yourselves in my shoes as someone who is a commuter. I'm only one person. Imagine everybody else coming from that direction. Now, traffic backflows. If I come from one street, the next street is just as bad. And then the next, and then the next, and then the next. It's, you guys, I'm sure, are very aware, many of you probably have voted on the vision zero that Mayor Philip has approved. It took away one of the lanes on each side, making it a singular lane, bidirectional street, Bergen Avenue, already adding to the stress and the burden on the community. Now, add the 2,000 units worth of people that are going to live in, in Journal Square, the three-tower building. Add the stress of 77 more units that are being built in that immediate area while it's a school year. Now, add the school buses, public transportation, and just the commuters walking, right? They're going to cause traffic, they're causing the street, they're biking. I think all this needs to be taken into consideration for this project. Now, everyone is saying here, you know, we want parking, want parking. I actually think the project in general is a terrible idea. You already have a 2,000-unit building four blocks away. Why add to the burden to the community? And then the second thing I want to bring up is what is the mission of Jersey City? What is our goal and vision in the next 30 years? Because I've lived in this area, I've grown up in this area, and it appears to me that it's changed. Now, I don't know what it is that's changed it, but this project does not align with what I believe is the vision of Jersey City. And if that's the case, then maybe that needs to be clarified. Maybe that needs to be discussed. And does your vision, as Commissioners, as members of the community and everyone else here, does that align with the project manager and the general, then this whole project as a whole? Does our mission align with theirs? Does their goal align with ours? And then bring us residents into the, I'm not even a resident, I'm a commuter. Bring us into the picture. Does it align with what we want, what we need? And I believe the answer is no. Now, take that into consideration when you guys are taking your vote. But I don't believe that this project's in the benefit of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you swear in your testimony tonight it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Michael Youssef, M.I.C.H.A.L.Youssef-Y-O-U-S-S-E-F, 122 Gold Street, North Althing.
Ms. Youssef, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm a J.C., general contractor, licensed insurance in New Jersey, New York. And I did many projects, high-rise projects and middle-rise. I went through a lot of safety controls. I went through a lot of programs to go through permits. And what I see here surprised everybody around us, that permits went out without a lot of measures through the city, which is demolitions plans, control, safety control plans, vibration plans, cracks. What surprised me, actually, it is a building six inch away from the wall. So everybody's talking about first floor walls, and nobody talks about second floor, third floor, and above, window through the stairs. Some people from our church can jump. You know, high school, and you know, like, the teenage. But right now, from tenants to this church, from the church to... and above, window through the stairs. Some people from our church can jump, you know, high school, and you know, like the teenage, but right now, from tenants to this church, from the church to tenants can jump very easily to there. And who gonna protect those? Who gonna go through if there's a fire in, in each window of those? The fire department, first thing to do is closing my means of aggress. I gonna control, I gonna put my kids in danger, in dangers right in the back of the buildings? That's because you want a building, a building next to me and building, and opening a window right there. Everyone worrying about, worry about actually parking. I went to last month, is he doing a test bed? Um, and we found up the machine right by the sidewalk without permit, without nothing in Saturday. My kids went through this, to the street and going down there. Wouldn't see a flu test for the fire hydrant, and the fire hydrant right in front of them. Are this fire hydrant capable for the two building, for the rest of the community, or no? We never saw it. Okay, what about the electrical vault right in front of the building? Right in front of the building, there's a big room, very, very old, and we all concerned about this one. Did anyone actually check it or, or, um, inspect it? In going through, and our means of aggress, again, it's a very, it's a very short twenty-six inch from the platform, and the wall to the platform in the first and second floor, it's only six inch gap, five feet from the top wall, and this is very easily to be accessed. If there's anything happened to there. Anybody concerned about, um, vertical or horizontal, horizontal safety knitting? Anyone actually was talking about what is the safety measure of the sidewalk shed? How, how is it gonna control the sidewalk shed? Are we gonna need ten feet in each building to control the public, or just in front of them? And they gonna close our, um, our schedule? And, and we, we all know that church have a very, uh, heavy schedule in Saturday and Satu, Sunday. Are they gonna get permits on those, or no? Debris removal, garbage removal, you have the fire hydrant in front of the building, how's it gonna close and take the lane and put the dumpster there? We need to require to daily cleaning, removing garbage in daily basis, no storage debris. Are we gonna see rats? And you see a lot of animals, or, or, um, for the kids? And you know how the kids sense right now.
Sorry, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I need three hours to talk, but thank you.
Marina Abadir, A-B-A-D-I-R, um, Rutherford, New Jersey, zero-seven-zero-seven.
Mr. Abadir, you have three minutes.
I care deeply about this church. I was born and raised in this church. Even though I live far away from this church, my parents put the effort to make me go. Now that I am sixteen years old, and after all this coming into church, I've made the best community a girl could ask for in this beautiful place. To attend church, we need this parking in order to get to your church. It's extremely hard to find parking space, especially because, as everyone knows, this is Jersey City, and we already struggle to find parking space. So either you leave very early so you can find a parking spot, or you leave on time, and by the time you find parking space, you miss either the liturgies, or speeches, or prayers that we want to come in here. Believe it or not, half of the congregation, not just, not just is in Jersey's, um, but are all over like different towns, so if we can't find parking space, or barely have anywhere to park, then you are stopping us from going to our real home. This is not just a home you can come to, this is a home where miracles happen and joy grows, as if we can get there because of the little things of parking. So if you're, if you're taking away these parking, um, if you're taking away our parking, you're risking chances of us not becoming in the church's presence.
Thank you. Good evenings.
Who waived it? Who waived due diligence on this project? And the reason it was never conducted is because it violates EPA consent decree with the EPA. City, or, uh, the EPA sued the city over dumping of sewer, excess sewer into waterways, violation of Clean Water Act. They sued, city settled with the consent decree, decree, and then they violated it, and it was modi, there is in existence presently modified consent decree with EPA. And this violates the consent decree because this excess, excess sewer is going to be dumped into waterways. And then, there's, again, no public notice given at the construction site. I'm there like every other day, at this block. Never, ever, anybody posted a public notice. Why? What's, what's the point? To hide it? Now, safety mitigation plan, how are you going to proceed with the demolition there? There's no way to conduct as is. And that's the, one of the reasons that the due diligence is waived. Now I am requested that local employment be mandatory for this construction site. If developer wants the favor from the city, then he has to provide employment for, for local people as a priority. So I request on Mr. Chuck Harrington, currently is under investigation by U.S. Attorney for fraud regarding two, two Duncan Avenue. So I'm requesting that this case will be thrown out just on account of Mr. Chuck Harrington representing in this case. Now the traffic study that you allowed proceeds on the calculations from like Bologna, Bologna tables. I can prove that blue cheese grows on moon based on the, the metrics that are used by the, on the traffic studies presented by private contractors. And Mr. Torres, you made a good point. Mr. Alampi, you know, test question in negligence cases is can a reasonable person foresee an injury? Mr. Torres, you made a very good point. Gap between the buildings between one inch and six inches, fifty feet or more, or longer, right? Dead cat, dead bird, or leaves. How are you going to clean it? It's a health hazard. So I'm requesting this case will be thrown out. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harrington.
Acting Chair, seeing no other from the public wishing to speak.
No, we're not finished as yet.
What's that?
I said, we're not finished as yet. Mr. Harrington will speak, and then...
Okay, yeah, I, I just want to address Mr. Kokolowski's comments there regarding me, is everything's absolutely false. Uh, I don't know where he comes up with this nonsense, uh, and, but we will get a copy of the transcript in the event I want to pursue a slander suit against him. But I think, I think his presence and, and what he says before the boards speaks for themselves.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public on eight-twenty-nine Bergen Avenue? Mr. Harrington, would you like to wrap it us up?
Yeah, I just reiterate earlier that, uh, yeah, I'd like to, um, carry this to the September twenty-third, uh, planning board date, give us an opportunity to take a look at that. I, if it's not ready by then, I will communicate with Mr. Shalgin, who, uh, is, uh, an attorney counsel for the church, and I, when I communicate through him, uh, so he, he reaches out to Father Tom and Father David. So, um, that's, that's the plan. You know, I'd ask that it be carried, uh, to the date certain of, uh, September twenty-third.
Cam.
We can accommodate that. It's gonna disrupt the flow, but we can accommodate that September twenty-third, it is.
Okay, with preservation of notice.
Yeah, the, hopefully, things are worked out so that it doesn't disrupt the whole agenda, because I have other clients out there as well.
Okay.
Counsel, is it, uh, appropriate to see if we can get an opinion from a authority stating whether that, uh, that point of conflict between Magde and their attorney in terms of the space, what is the, uh, certified, uh, distance?
We've taken note. We will see if we can get an answer for the board. Yeah, we'll, we'll reach out to the DCA and see if we can get an answer.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington.
Thank you.
I want to thank the public for coming out this evening and voicing their concerns in regards to eight-twenty-nine Bergen Avenue. This matter now has been carried for September twenty-third. Thank you. We'll take a ten-minute break, then we'll move on to our next case. You're welcome. As our policy, we do not open any new cases, um, at ten. We're at nine-twenty-seven now.
Let me help everybody other than Mr. Burke. Mr. Burke, do you believe that you're gonna get done within a half hour?
Well, but I don't want you to rush. Do you think it's gonna take a half hour so that everybody else can maybe move their app, yeah, you're next. You're number eleven, eleven, one-eleven Colden Street.
So that means this is gonna wind up being the last thing of the night, but, okay. The rest of you would like to sit for the thirty minutes and see, fair. Any takers, or everybody wants to sit for thirty minutes? I knew you were the smartest one in the room, Mr. Wine.
Um, I'm only gonna be half-smart, because I'm only gonna ask to adjourn one of mine later on. I think we'll get to number twelve. I'm, I spoke to Jim Burke, he said he's not gonna take until ten o'clock for eleven, so I'm confident we can get to twelve. But sixteen is mine, so if you'd like to call that case, and, uh, I will, sixteen, I'll adjourn that.
Adjourn.
Yeah. If you'd like to call the case.
Two, September twenty-third.
P-two-zero-two-five-zero-zero-nine-one, it's a minor site plan for sixty-nine Lake Street, September twenty-third.
So the only thing before Cam, before you say that, that's actually Rosh Hashanah, I will not be available that night. Um, so I'm wondering, uh, since it's just a minor site. Pardon me?
October.
Is there room on two weeks from now?
That has two-hundred chapel and Pulte Homes, there's no room.
Okay.
I retract my prior statement, Mr. Wine.
So let's, so let's do it, so let's do this, let's do this. Let's do it for the twenty-third, and I'll see if I can find somebody to cover for me that evening.
Fair.
Um, and if for whatever reason I can't, we'll adjourn further from there.
Okay.
If that's all right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Do you wanna, do you need, no further notice?
No further notice.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I'll be back for twelve, though.
Okay.
Maybe.
At this time, I would like to call in case P-two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-one-two-one-one-one, Colden Street. Preliminary final major site plan with a C variance.
I did have one other matter, so I did want to carry that. Yeah. Want to do it now? Yeah, let's do that while we're here. Case P-two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-two-zero-three, it's a preliminary and final major site plan for four-seventy-five Newark Avenue. Mr. Burke, you'd like to carry that matter?
To the October meeting, first October meeting.
Cam.
Wait, what item on the agenda?
Seventeen.
Seventeen? Okay, okay. I thought I heard you say four-seventy-five Bergen. Um, oh, okay, seventeen.
What's the first meeting in October?
October seventh.
October seventh, no further notice, Mr. Burke. If you're here on case P-two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-two-zero-three, four-seventy-five Newark Avenue, it's carried to October seventh, there'll be no further notice. Okay, Mr. Burke, back to case P-two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-one-zero-two, one-eleven Colden Street.
All right, thank you, Counsel. Um, the original notice had been sent in. I don't know if you had an opportunity to, to review it, because this was, uh, this was carried from a June meeting. So Counsel, would you like to see this, or have you had a chance?
I had a chance.
Okay.
Cameron, we have it in the file. I don't know that it was marked as A-one, so for purposes of the record, the notice will be reflected as A-one.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. Um, so Jim Burke, I'm representing the applicant, and, uh, we're gonna present two witnesses, and we have a third in the wings. If you don't need that person, then the person will not appear. Uh, there's only one very small, uh, variance here, uh, for minimum aisle width, and we're hoping the civil engineer can address that, you know, versus having a, a planner come up or a, uh, another, another witness, okay? So the first witness will be our architect.
Antonio Aiello, A-I-E-L-L-O.
I think we can switch.
Yeah.
You looked like a linebacker there.
Is your license current and in good standing?
I am, yes, it is.
And you've appeared before this board?
I have, yes.
You're qualified, thank you.
So, um, again, is this on? Anybody?
Is this thing on?
Hello, hello? Yes? Okay. Thank you. Feel like Dick Clark, you know, with the, okay, so, um, you, I'm looking at a set of plans that you drafted, preliminary final site plan for one-eleven, one-thirteen Colden Street. Um, I stated there are no variances other than the small variance we spoke of, uh, but I would like you to walk through the, the plan.
I stated there are no variances other than the small variance we spoke of, but I would like you to walk through the plans and describe the units and what's contemplated as far as parking.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
And Mr. Aiello, these are the same plans that were submitted with the application. Do not need to be marked, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And there's nothing within your slide deck that is an exhibit that would need to be marked?
Absolutely not, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. 111113 Colden Street is currently located on a block that is, in my opinion, very underutilized, a lot of empty lots with car storage, storage units, some warehouses and a car wash. There is a development adjacent to our project. And behind us, it's a six-story structure to the right of our property or west and behind us to the south is an 11-story multifamily building. Our building overall is a five-story multifamily building, 16 units, four residential floors, four units per floor over parking. As you can see here, the properties on the, as exists, the yellow house on the right. Our site plan, I'll go straight to the first floor plan to walk you through the project. Our first floor, very simple, mostly utilities, parking, egress components and the lobby. We have five parking spaces total. Bicycle parking, lobby area, and then our current utilities such as fire command center and the electrical rooms are elevated to accommodate the floodplain, which reduce that aisle width. The floor plans on the right-hand side are typical on each floor. We have four, one bedroom plus ten units, two in the front, two in the back. The rear units have a balcony on each unit. We have here an average of 800 to 940 square feet per unit. On the roof, we have an approximately 1,000 square foot roof deck and extensive, almost 2,000 square feet of green roof area to help mitigate the rainwater for the building. As well as, of course, the mechanical system, condenser units.
Just for ease, would you cite the page number you're looking at?
Absolutely, I apologize, yes. The roof plan was on page A101. I'm now going to skip the typical drawings and work our way to the elevation drawing with the colors at A301 showing the materials. As I mentioned, this is a five-story building, modern contemporary design, pseudo-industrial art deco top without a cornice, simple vertical spires and a clear railings up at the roof deck, metal ACP components, brick, stone and metal panels on the ground floor and simple stucco components at the egress and elevators to help minimize the impact on the facade overall. The building, as I mentioned, will have the material stated on the right, modern steel wraps around the windows, light colored brick, terracotta metal panels, gray metal panels, corrugated system around the garage, stone at the ground floor, brick and metal above. And that concludes my presentation.
You mentioned something about the flood in the aisle.
Yes.
Could you give the board a little more detail about that? Like what's the relationship?
Because the building is based in a flood zone, we had to elevate the utility rooms. By elevating the utility rooms, we had to add stairs, adding more square footage into those spaces, thus reducing that aisle width more and more in order to accommodate those additional requirements to stay out of the flood zone.
Okay. Any other comments for the?
Uh, no, unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. Let's go back to the roof and the railings on the roof.
Absolutely.
The material you were using for the roof. So that's a good one right there because that number at the bottom there, I can't make out the number. Where's the railing? Is there a setback on the railing?
So we currently have railings along the front facade area. And then we're going to, we're going to have railings as well at the roof deck itself, so they can't walk onto the green roof areas.
So you're not walking onto the green roof area. So let's go to the front elevation then.
Absolutely.
Well, the front elevation. So basically on top there, that would be basically about, I think that number was what I go foot and a half or two feet back, those railings?
No, those railings will be at the facade, the face of the facade, those railings, then there's a secondary facade at the roof deck itself.
Tough, okay. So I noticed you have like a four-inch gap underneath the bottom railing and the roof itself.
That is right.
There is about a four-inch space?
Correct.
And nobody will be leaning up against that?
No, at that front facade at the.
So nothing should be falling through there?
No, absolutely not, absolutely not. You have an extensive area of.
It's not like a balcony one that you'll be.
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
About the railings on the balcony? Railings on the balcony? Same thing, that four-inch gap?
That is correct, yes.
Is it possible to put that either flush or a lot closer to the?
We can make it much closer, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, if you make it a lot closer. Flush is harder, but make it a lot.
Yeah, we like to leave a gap just so we can get snow and water to be able to drain off of it, but absolutely.
Also, four inches though also allows objects to roll underneath and land on where people are walking.
Absolutely, I have small things, I understand.
That's the safety aspect that I kind of have a bug with.
Yeah, that's not an issue.
I suggest two inches. I suggest three quarters of an inch, but that doesn't help the force.
I can make two inches work.
Yes, I like that. That's the only question I had, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? That concludes your presentation?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my second witness will be the civil engineer, Adnan Khan, K-H-A-N.
I do. Adnan Khan, A-D-N-A-N-K-H-A-N.
Mr. Khan, have you testified in front of this board before?
I was here before, pre-COVID, so if you want.
Long time. Is your license current and in good standing?
They are, yes.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Thank you.
All right, so I'd like you to address the site plan issues to confirm that it meets all the site plan criteria. And also, the architect did touch upon the small variance needed for the aisle width. I'd like you to elaborate on that a bit too.
I'm more familiar with the mouse than touchpad, so trying to, as you heard, like I'm trying to zoom it up, but the project, basically on the ground floor is our parking and we are proposing five parking spaces. When accessible power parking space and four regulars parking, out of which, three of them are like 90-degree parking and two parallel space on the ground floor. We also proposing a bike racks as Mr. Aiello mentioned. We are exceeding the bike racks requirements for the ordinance. And the rear of the property is all landscaped with evergreen trees at the perimeter of the building. Let's see, it's in this area right here.
Mr. Khan, I think if you go up to the top of the taskbar, there should be a zoom-in feature.
Okay. All right, so yeah. All right, yeah. So we have a landscape area. It's about 15-foot wide and the width of the lot, the green area that we are proposing with evergreen trees along the perimeter of the green area, along the property line rather. And as I mentioned, we have three 90-degree parking spaces. Two of them are EV-ready and because of the number of units, this project qualifies for the EV parking, so we are proposing the required parking for two EV spaces. And then we have two parallel spaces. The question regarding the driveway and. All right. So we have a 10-foot curb cut. There's a driveway that comes in from the front of the property from the street. It opens up to 12 feet, then it further opens up to 14 feet. And as Mr. Aiello mentioned, this property is in a flood hazard area. We already got our DEP permit for the flood hazard. And because of the height limitations and the equipment height that needs to be placed at certain height, we have to raise the electrical room to a higher elevation than the rest of the parking deck and that limits the driveway aisle to 14 feet. However, this is only for a small area until the electrical room. Once we pass the electrical room, the aisle width opens up and it meets the requirement for 22 feet. So technically, the area where the cars will be parked and they will be maneuvering in and out or turning around is all complies. It's only this small section, about 35 to 36 feet in the front from the end, from the, from the gate of the parking deck to this electrical room. That's the only section that is 14 feet. However, this is, this is, this ground floor serves five parking spaces. So it's not a very heavily traveled turnover of the cars in and out. And I believe the applicant submitted the traffic report which mentions that we anticipate four peak hours in the morning, four peak hours in the evening. So again, it's not something concurrent that the cars will be coming in and out on a regular basis that that might be a conflict. So in my opinion, I think we have a safe situation that the cars can easily maneuver within the parking area and they can come in and out. And we have some area in case if the car is coming in and a car is trying to leave out, I think we have some within the 22-feet area that the one car can wait while the other car is coming in. So I think it's overall a safe condition, but it's just because we have to raise the section of the property to comply with the DEP requirements. We also proposing stormwater management for the project. Currently, there is no existing stormwater management. We are proposing a dry well system in accordance with the city requirements. We are capturing all the water from the roof leaders, from all sides of the building and diverting that into the stormwater system onto the property. There are also lighting improvements. The lighting that we are proposing within the parking area is all LED-type light fixtures. Let's see. Basically, they are all ceiling-mounted light fixtures, LED-type, full cutoff, downward throw and efficient light fixtures that will be for, to light up the parking area for the cars that they will be traveling. Similarly, we have some small lighting and that, some minimum lighting on the roof deck and I think that's shown also on the architecture plans. Again, those lights are all like low, low-height lights, cut-off fixtures, that they don't glow to the adjacent properties or beyond the property lines. So we comply with those requirements as well. And as, we also proposing two shade trees on the street in addition to the 13 trees that I mentioned in the back. So there will be some shade trees that will be on the right of it, two shade trees.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. We do have a traffic engineer here. I don't know if you need to hear from him based on the one small variance that we've discussed. We've had both professionals discuss it. So I'm happy to bring them up, but that's up to you, Chair and Board.
Any questions from Mr. Khan?
No.
No. No, I don't think we need your other person to testify.
I think Ben's eyes are burning through the back of my head too, so I know he's.
Item 12.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
T minus 14.
That concludes our presentation.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open for the public. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this case?
See, no one from the public. I'd like to close the public portion part of the meeting.
Thank you. Eric?
Yes.
Your turn.
Staff agrees with the testimony provided by the applicant's professionals. Staff sees the, sees that the proposed development meets the C1 criteria for the variance. Staff just requests that the applicant agree to the conditions in the staff memo with the added condition that the roof railing be reduced to two inches or increased, I guess.
Which is it? Increased, two inches? Two-inch clearance on all railings. The applicant agrees.
Balcony and roof.
The applicant agrees.
Okay. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion.
Manager, I'd like to make a motion to approve case. P 2024-0102, as has been presented to the board tonight.
Second. Okay, Acting Vice Chair Torres?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Think it's a good project and I think it did in a good amount of time, so I vote aye.
And Acting Chair Gangadhan?
Yeah, I think the variance is requested there is very minimal and doesn't have any detriment to the project. My vote is aye.
Motion carries. All in favor?
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Take a 10-minute break. I'm kidding.
You're very determined.
If we can't have fun with this, what's the point?
I was just going to suggest it, actually.
So I'm going to call case P 2024-0242, 194 and 196 Culver Avenue. It's for preliminary and final major site plan with a C variance.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Madam Acting Chair, Commissioners Benjamin Wine of Prime Tuvell and Micali, on behalf of the applicant 610 Comlux LLC. First for housekeeping, I'm going to give Mr. Alampi the.
Madam Chairman, receive the affidavit publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at 194 and 196 Culver here in the city. I've had the opportunity to review it. It did appear to be in order and marked as A1 for purposes of the record.
Thank you.
So just by way of opening, the property is located at 194 and 196 Culver Avenue. That's block 22101, lots 29 and 30, and we are located in the Route 440 Culver redevelopment plan within the mid-rise A district. I know that's a mouthful. The subject property is currently vacant and has been for decades. And what we're proposing is to construct a new four-story residential building consisting of nine units and six parking spaces on the property, along with some improvements which you'll hear about from our project team. The challenge a little bit in this district is that in this redevelopment plan, there are only two permitted uses for our property. One would be a mid-rise apartment, which is what we're proposing, and the other is townhouses. Unfortunately, we don't meet the lot area requirement for either, and so we've elected to go with the mid-rise A apartment use. We are ultimately taking what we believe is a practical approach to development here, which does include a little bit of bulk variance relief, but as you'll hear as we go forward, in an effort to mitigate some of that bulk variance relief, we are designing and proposing a building that is only four stories tall instead of what's permitted to be six stories. We're proposing floor area ratio that is below what is permitted. We're proposing density that is below what is permitted. And ultimately, I guess what we hope you'll agree is that by going a little bit more horizontal on the upper floors instead of vertical, we're actually designing a better product for the residents of our future building as well as for the neighborhood. With that, we do have five deviations from the lot, from the redevelopment plan. One is for the lot area being less than required. We're at 5,000 square feet instead of 6,000. Again, we cannot possibly comply with that, given that there is development on both sides of our property. We're also at 50 feet wide instead of 60 feet wide. Those two kind of go together for the same reason. And really, our bulk variances are for the side yard setback above the ground floor being at zero feet instead of five feet, the rear yard setback above the ground floor being at 20 feet instead of 30 feet, and finally, the building coverage above the ground floor at 76.68% instead of 65%. You heard me mention above the ground floor a few times. The ground floor is permitted to be 100% developed in order to accommodate parking, which is exactly what we are doing. I also want to indicate for the record, we've worked very closely with the Eggie Mallory Block Association led by Jonathan McCauley, who I believe is here this evening. And we came up with a building that we believe is chock-full of sustainability features, which is something that is unique to this redevelopment plan, but actually pretty cool when we go through it, as you'll see. You'll hear about these from our architect and ultimately, we hope you'll agree that what we're providing is a unique flavor for a unique lot in a unique location. I also want to indicate that we have received. I also want to indicate that we have received Cam's staff report and take no exception to compliance with all of the conditions therein. And with that, I have two witnesses I intend to call up this evening. Our project architect, who is already called up, Jeff Lewis. And then it'll be our project planner Carolyn Wurstel to speak to those areas of relief above the ground floor. And with that, unless you have any questions, and me, I'm happy to proceed with Mr. Lewis.
Sure.
Yes, I do. Jeffrey Lewis, J F F R Y L E W I S. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, your license still current and in good standing?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, you may proceed.
Thank you.
Jeff, walk us through what we're proposing.
Okay, so I can skip all the easy stuff that Ben laid out and I'll get right into the site plan here. So we do have one hundred percent lot coverage on the ground floor. Um at the front property, we are proposing new concrete curbs, new concrete sidewalks, and one new ten-foot curb cut. Uh there's one existing tree street tree and one new street tree being proposed. And then both of them are going to be in new tree pits that are going to be bioswells, actually, that are um one of the Jersey City approved uh tree pit designs that we're going with. When we move right into the floor plans, let me just first mention, we do have nine units. Three of them are one-bedroom apartments, two of them are two bedrooms, and then four of them at the top of the building are for our three-bedroom duplex apartments. Uh this is the first floor plan. Uh starting at the bottom here, we have our secondary entry. This leads to stair number two as well as our trash room. Both of these rooms also can access the parking area directly. We have a ten-foot wide garage door, which leads to a twelve-foot wide drive aisle. Uh beneath that drive aisle, we have our meter rooms and our sprinkler room, as this is a fully sprinkled building. In the back, we have six parking spaces and eight bicycle parking spaces. And just briefly, we got to the six parking spaces. This redevelopment plan actually has minimums and maximums for parking. So three parking spaces were the minimum allowed here and six are the maximum. So we figured since we were doing the curb cut, we'll do the maximum six parking spaces. Uh also, two of those sustainable design requirements are here in the parking area. One is a car share space, so this space here is dedicated to a car share car. And then these two spaces are dedicated EV charging spaces. Then the third, we have our main entry, which leads to the lobby. This lobby has a door directly to the parking area as well as to stair number one and our ground floor apartment. This is a one-bedroom ADA adaptable apartment, uh which has like the rest of the units washer dryer in the apartment uh and heat and air conditioning, of course. Uh here on the second floor, we have four apartments. It's two two-bedroom apartments and then two one-bedroom apartments with a smaller den space attached. Uh the rear apartments have roof decks on that twenty-foot setback roof area. Half of it is used as roof deck and then half of it is used for a green roof. Uh we have window wells on each side of the building that go up to the top floor. However, we did design it so that the windows are facing each other and not facing our neighbors for a little extra privacy. Um I'd also like to note here that you can see with our twenty-foot setback, we are a little bit shorter than the building next to us to the which is to the right, to the east, um if you're looking at the plan. This is the third floor. As I mentioned, the third and fourth floor are duplex apartments, so they work together. Um there are four apartments total. They're three-bedroom, three-bath apartments. So on this floor, each of those apartments has a living, dining, kitchen area, one bathroom, a den, and all of their utilities. Also, this internal stair which goes up to the fourth floor. And then on the fourth floor, there are three bedrooms, two bathrooms, including the en suite bedroom number one. And then that stair also continues up to a private roof deck. So coming to the roof, each apartment has their own private roof deck. Um and we also have a common stair which leads to the roof. We're also meeting more of our sustainable design requirements here on the roof. One is for raised planters for vegetable planting area for the building tenants. That's in the center of the building here. And then the fourth that we're we're achieving is having fifty percent green roof for the entire roof area. So that includes this roof as well as that lower roof area, and we are at fifty percent here. Moving to the building elevations, uh we have a ground floor finish of smooth beige brick. Above that, we have four three-story bays. They're finished with fiber cement panels. The two center bays are off-white and the outer two bays are warm gray in color. We have a thirty-two inch tall dark gray metal wrapped cornice at the top of the building, black aluminum frame windows and doors, and our garage door is a dark gray metal door with half transparency glass. Here's the rear elevation. Um this first floor is actually at the back property line and there's a uh an industrial building right up against that. Above the the second, third, and fourth floor, we'll have a gray vinyl siding finish um and the same black aluminum frame windows and doors as we had on the front. And here, we're looking at the side elevations. We are wrapping the front materials around for the first two feet, and then after that, we're using the same finish as the rear. Again, you can see the windows are facing each other, so you don't actually see them from the side elevation. That's the end of the drawings. We did say five, so the fifth uh sustainable design requirement is to have an energy star rating of seventy-five. So this will be an extremely efficient building as well. So in summary, we are doing the four stories instead of the six that were allowed, but we're under the FAR. We're not asking for extra square footage. We are providing large apartments that we think fit in better with this neighborhood. With the four stories, we do have a four-and-a-half story building to our right, a three-story building to our left, some two-and-a-half story buildings across the street. We thought the four-story building was a nice step down in the neighborhood and and actually fit very well. So we think it's a better building like this than a conforming six-story building with the setbacks would be. So that's our argument here tonight.
And Jeff, just one last question for you. Um the stormwater management, we are proposing stormwater detention on the site as well as.
I I apologize, I forgot to mention that. We do have a stormwater detention system, and I do have those drawings if anyone wanted to see them.
Okay, if anyone wants to see, we can. Otherwise, that would conclude my direct examination of Mr. Lewis.
Any questions from the board?
Yes.
Question for you, Mr. Lewis, real quickly. Uh just building to your left, building to your right, spaces in between them. About three feet, I don't see the number.
Building to the right, we have three feet. The building to the left, there's a whole driveway there, it's like twenty to twenty-five feet.
Oh, wait, okay, that's that's what I see bigger, okay? I just didn't see the number. Like, good, good job.
Yeah, I think it's in actually a whole another lot there, so it's about twenty-five feet.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll call up Ms. Wurstel, our professional planner, to walk through the justifications for the relief.
Do you want anything up?
Uh do you wanna go to the site plan?
Ms. Wurstel, you're still under oath.
Yes, I acknowledge I'm still under oath. My license is still in good standing. Um so we're here this evening uh on this application, one ninety-four, one ninety-six Culver Avenue for a couple of variances. Um the first one I'm gonna start off with is the minimum lot area. Um and I guess uh related to that is the minimum lot width. Um as was mentioned when we first started this, um the uh there are a couple of uses that are permitted here on this site um that are enumerated in the plan. Uh when you look at them, there are some restrictions on all of these uses. So one, two family homes are only permitted on certain lots which are identified in the plan, and we are not on those lots. So we're not permitted your, you know, more traditional detached one and two family homes because we're not one of the identified lots. Um townhouse um development is permitted, but it requires that you have four lots to be developed essentially together in that sort of townhouse style. We only have two lots. Um so when we were looking at what we would felt was like the most appropriate use was uh looking at the midra- um the mid-rise apartment. Um and that uh use requires a minimum lot area of six thousand square feet. We're at five thousand square feet. Um so we are requesting a minimum lot area. Um we do think that uh the lot area, as as mentioned, is still sufficient to provide all of the um things that are necessary. You know, you can still provide the off-street parking. We can still provide um the unit layout. Um so but uh we are less than what is required and what the standards are set for for that E use. Um so that does come into play with some of the other variances we are requesting. Um we do think that this is the appropriate use here. Um mid-rise apartment building is appropriate for Culver Avenue and for the area in general. We are close to transit. Um that is one of the uses that is permitted here in this this district. So again, we we think that this is the most appropriate use for this lot. Um the minimum lot width, again, we're looking at that is sort of like that C-one sort of hardship criteria. We are only fifty feet wide. Um we're sixty is required. Um but again, we think that this is the most appropriate use for this particular property in this location. We also requesting a minimum rear yard setback. Um and again, this is for that um rear yard um for above the ground floor. Um we are permitted a hundred percent lot coverage on the ground floor. The request is just for above that. Uh we're proposing twenty feet where thirty is required. Um we believe that even with this the the twenty feet, um we are sort of aligning with the building that is adjacent to us to the east or to to page, I guess, right, um where they have a very similar setback for their four-story building and they go to the the twenty-foot um uh setback, um as you can see. Um so we do believe that we are gonna be maintaining the light and air and open space that is consistent with with the character. Um you know, we did have a visual impact assessment that was part of the package. Um you know, and in looking at that, um you know, you'll see to the north of us is a one-story industrial building that's right up against the lot line. You know, there's, you know, no substantial impacts to that um structure. Um to the um and to the east of us, uh where we have that four-story building, uh you know, there are some afternoon um light uh will be, you know, there will be impacts. Uh but there would be impacts even if we were to have conforming setbacks because you could still have a sixty-story building or not a six-story, a six-story building um which would be taller. And even if you were then to provide the thirty-foot setback, you would still see those sort of similar or or potentially worse impacts. So we think that having a shorter building and providing the setback where it's consistent with the adjacent building is is a better alternative here. We're also requesting a minimum side yard setback. And again, this is for the residential floors. Um we are working with a slightly narrower lot than the standard was created for. Again, those the mid-rise building assume, you know, use assumes that you have sixty feet and we only have fifty. Um so on a typical sixty-foot lot for that use, ten, five feet on either side, you get a fifty-foot wide, you know, upper floor. We're only fifty feet wide at this lot, so we're still providing that fifty feet wide. And we think that this um creates um a really efficient layout and creates really uh well-sized units. Um we are have um one-bedroom units that are around eight eight hundred square feet. Um the uh upper floor duplex units are averaging seventeen hundred square feet. So these are really well-sized units. Um and that's sort of uh is allowed with that fifty-foot wide floor plate. Um we are still providing adequate separation for uh adjacent windows for building code. Um there are no uh windows proposed on our structure at the property line, um so that's still providing the privacy. Um and uh again, when we're sort of looking at, you know, what are the impacts light and air um and comparing uh this to what could be permitted, um again, i- if we were to look at this, there are other types of uses that would be permitted on this in this zone, um such as a a townhouse. Those uses in this zone are permitted at like four stories and no side yard setback. So we're sort of affecting a similar situation, a similar um result in terms of the setbacks. Um and we don't, again, I don't think that we're just going to see a substantial impact in light and air compared to conforming. Um again, if we were had a conforming six-story building with a five-foot wide side yard setback, I think we would be seeing similar or potentially more substantial uh light and air impacts because again, the building would be taller. And so when the building's taller, you have, you know, less angle of the sun to come down and reach in between those buildings. So um we think again that that we're still going to be maintaining, uh you know, adequate light and air um and that um we don't see that there would be substantial detriment from this uh setback. Again, similarly, we're asking for a maximum building coverage um for, again, just for those upper floors. Um we're at seven little over seventy-six percent where sixty-five is what is permitted. Um you know, building coverage is oftentimes correlated with FAR, floor area ratio, um in term factoring with the intensity of a development. Um even though we're asking for this additional coverage, our FAR is still less than the maximum permitted for this site. We're only at three-point-three where four is what is permitted. So um even though we're asking for the additional coverage, we're not maxing out what would be an allowable development intensity on this site. And it it also doesn't impact in terms of um uh the the lot coverage. You know, we're permitted to have one hundred percent ground uh ground floor coverage, that is what's proposed. Um and as mentioned, we we have numerous um stormwater, um you know, mitigation measures with the green roofs. Uh we have the stormwater detention basin. So overall, you know, I think this project would leave this site in a better condition in terms of those uh stormwater impacts than it is today. Um I think that this project advances and promotes the municipal land use law. Um it's permitted use, um it'll uh an appropriate residential use consistent with purpose A. Um you know, I think that um we will still maintain adequate light air um open space to the surrounding properties consistent with purpose C. Um I think that the there's an appropriate population density here consistent with purpose E um and uh promote a desirable visual environment consistent with purpose I. Um you know, I don't see a substantial detriment here. This is uh an appropriate use for this mixed um ri- mid-rise A district. Um it is an undersized lot, but we're not, again, we're not maxing out the height. We're not maxing out the FAR. Um we are trying to create a building shape that is um and bulk that is uh consistent with what we're seeing elsewhere on the block. Um and um uh you know, I think overall, there's a lot of benefits to this project in terms of all the the um sustainable design requirements that we're providing. Uh you know, we're gonna be, you know, uh replacing the sidewalks, uh you know, providing those new street trees. So again, I think overall, you just end up with a much better condition than what is there, which is a vacant lot. Um likewise, I don't see this would uh result in substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan. Um I think it fulfills it it fulfills the objectives of the redevelopment plan uh to write re- to redevelop Route four forty Culver Avenue in a manner that is compatible with permitted development in adjacent redevelopment areas and consistent with the design plan for that Route four forty Boulevard. And to recognize significant opportunities for residential and commercial redevelopment uh afforded by the areas proximity to the West Side Avenue Light Rail Station. Um so I think, you know, again, we're creating what is an appropriate infill development in this redevelopment plan area. Um and it's consistent with the city's master plan to continue to enhance residential neighborhoods and create that sort of balanced housing for the the needs of existing and and future residents. So I think overall, um though the positive and negative criteria uh have been met to support the those variances as requested.
Thank you, Carolyn. Just one follow-up question. Um anytime we speak about variances or in this case, really deviations from the redevelopment plan, um we talk about mitigation and you heard Jeff talk about them quite extensively. You alluded to them. I just want to confirm for the record, it's your opinion as a professional planner that the lesser height than what is permitted, the lower FAR, um the, I'll say lower density because we're really tying it to maximizing our parking um and lessening the impact to the surrounding street network, the meeting and achieving the sustainability requirements on on what is really a smaller development, but meeting them nonetheless. Would you agree as a professional planner that all of those mitigative techniques and the benefits of this project would substantially outweigh any detriments?
Uh yes, I think that that in summary, when you look at this project as a whole, yes, all of those benefits. You know, the fact that we're not maxing out the development potential, um all of the green elements that are being integrated here. Um you know, uh I think that they're all substantially outweigh. I think that they're all substantially outweigh those, you know, what I think are, you know, not substantial detriments.
Thank you, Carolyn. Madam Acting Chair, I have nothing further for this witness.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I got, I had a question there. Just with all those elements you're saying as a mid-rise, even though it doesn't have the size, it's less footage, 6,000 to 5,000. All of those things minimizing, you got the parking, you have the unit size, about a unit. You're going to have nine units, all of that. And as a right building there, two family homes, and you wouldn't need all these variances, wouldn't it be any difference?
So the two-family homes are not permitted, because we are not on one of the lots that is identified as that, for that use. So in this redevelopment plan, like I said, there are...
You got two uses only?
Yeah, yeah. So they enumerate a number of uses, and then they have conditions for those uses. So one- and two-family homes are identified as permitted uses only on certain lots within this block. And these two lots are not listed. So that's actually not technically a permitted use.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought was said at the beginning of the testimony.
Yeah, so Carolyn, you'd have to amend the redevelopment plan effectively to allow those uses, is that right?
Yeah, because it's kind of tricky, the way they wrote it, it's kind of part of the use. And so we'd almost, it would have to be like a use variance, which we can't do.
So you came up with this, so because of the...
Right, and like I...
What you're allowed to use on that property.
Right, what we're permitted. And then again, like, the townhouse, again, is, they require minimum of four lots. We've got two lots. So we, of the various options, which we would have needed a variance or amendment for any of them, we thought this is the most appropriate.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Cam. No, I'm going to open to the public. Yes. Anyone here from the public that would like to speak to?
I do. Jonathan McCully, J-O-N-A-T-H-A-N-M-C, capital A, U-L-E-Y, 111 Mallory Avenue, Unit 3, Jersey City, New Jersey, 07304.
Ms. McCully, you have three minutes.
Thank you for your time today, and I'm sorry to have interrupted the proceedings with the door earlier. My apologies. I'm president of the Iggy Mallory Block Association, and I call on you to support the development of 194 and 196 Culver Avenue. The developer includes a green roof, and the developer worked with our block association to include a bioswale. In addition, we found out the bioswale is something that could be forthcoming in future developments very easily. So this is really very helpful for our community and for Jersey City. In addition to the sustainable additions of the plan, this development will have the parking spots, or sorry, five parking spots and one rideshare spot. The developer will have four floors, not the maximum possible of six. This will keep the roof line close to the present roof line. In addition, the plan to have nine units, not 14. The developer is not trying to max out this project, but instead making a sustainable and reasonable plan for development. Please support this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Kato Lee Figueroa, K-A-T-O, Lee, L-E-E, Figueroa, F-I-G-U-E-R-O-A. I live at 200 Culver Avenue, on the left side of the property. I'm also a committee person within the community. I'm 65, 30 years in New York, 35 years in Jersey City. Heavily involved in the community in more ways than one.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. There's been a lot of communications. I also communicate within the neighborhood. This building kind of fits within that area. It's not overgrown, it's meeting a lot of requirements. As the owner on the left side, I see no problems. I've met with the lawyer, and if there's any small issues, we can work it out. The community had questions, they've all been answered in one form or fashion. I asked people to come, I don't know if they're here. I don't see them, I don't see a problem with this project going forward. So I approve this project with the board's, sorry, catching a go, approval.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time again.
Thank you. Good evening.
Douglas Harmon. Yes, absolutely. Douglas Harmon, D-O-U-G-L-E-S, H-A-R-M-O-N, 335 Plano Avenue.
Mr. Harmon, you have three minutes.
I don't even need it. It's a good idea. I hate the lot, I had a bad experience a lot. About time someone was maintaining the lot correctly. I prefer probably some other things to go there, but it's a great idea, I just want it to happen. It's like two more lots in the neighborhood I feel the same way about, it's a great idea, y'all doing a good job. And that's it, because I got young kids, my daughter walks from work up that block. The block feel like industrial to me. I don't know, it gives me a weird feeling. We need people. Not stores, we need people, that's it.
Thank you.
Everybody have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
See anybody else from public, I'd like to close the public portion part of the meeting.
Mr. Wine.
Sure, unless you have any questions of me, that would conclude my presentation. I appreciate the time, I agree to all the conditions listed in Mr. Black's report. Thank you for bearing with me and reaching item 12 on the agenda tonight, and I would respectfully request that you approve the application as presented.
Thank you. Cam.
Thank you, Mr. Wine and your team. Thank you for agreeing to the planning staff report dated June 3 of this year. Planning staff agrees with the professional testimony provided by Carolyn Worstel. And planning staff would just only add that we feel this has no detriment to our master plan, the zone plan, or the public's general health, welfare, well-being in regards to the variances. And with that, planning staff recommends approval with conditions.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case. P 2024 dash 0242, as presented to the board tonight.
On a motion to approve, Acting Vice Chair, Commissioner Torres.
Yep, I approve.
Commissioner Stomato.
Approve.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Yeah, so this is, I think, a very thoughtful and exceptionally well-done project. I know you won't be here on the 23rd, not sure if you have anything here on the 9th. So Shana Tova, I vote aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
And Acting Chair, Commissioner Gangden.
Yeah, I just want to thank the public for being here this evening, and thank you for working with the community that's good neighbors. I feel the variances requested is very minimal and non-detrimental to the area as well. So my vote is aye.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Thank you, everybody, and I will see you on the 9th.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, anyway.
Mr. Lee, you'll be carrying?
Yes, I have two matters. I would request that both be carried with preservation of notice to September 23rd. I have item number 13, case P 2025-0038, which is 427 Bergen Avenue, as well as case P 2024-0236, which is number 15 on the agenda, and that's 660 Grove Street.
So if there is anyone from the public, these two cases are being carried. Case P 2025 dash 0038, 427 Bergen Avenue, be carried to what they...
To September 23rd.
September 23rd. And case P 2024 dash 0236, to September 23rd.
Also to September 23rd, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone, have a good evening.
Resolutions? Eddie, resolutions?
I got, resolution one. Resolution, City of Jersey City Planning Board, case number P 2025 dash 0110. Applicant 252 Monticello LLC, address 252 Monticello Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block 15203, Lot 2. Descended on Tuesday, decided on Tuesday, July 29, 2025. Memorialized on Tuesday, August 26, 2025. Application for extension of prior approvals. Resolution two. Resolution for the Planning Board of Jersey City, of the City of Jersey City, extending preliminary and final major site plan approval submitted by Newport Associates Development Company, 535 Monmouth Street, AKA 354 10th Street, Lot 6902, Lot 27, case number P 2025 dash 0118. That's all.
Acting Vice Chair Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato. Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai. And Acting Chair Gangden.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor to memorialize resolutions.
Thank you.
Have a great Labor Day weekend.
Motion to adjourn, second, adjourn.
That's it.